We have healthy cookies. Start the recordings up here.
You brought your own food.
Ah, this is my humble cookies.
Same one for Cody.
Do we, we get a smoke break every hour and a half?
We're gonna, yeah, I'm not gonna push you all the way through. So we can't hear you say enough.
Oh, we can't. I'll be right back, I'll be right back, guys, gotta grab my cigarette. I was actually asking for Trent.
When I watch, when I watch those old westerns.
I remember as a kid, you smoked everywhere. Remember sitting in the Westerner Grill as soon as I'd get done eating, I'd look up and one of, somebody in my family would just be over there smoking.
I miss the Westerner Grill.
Oh, the chili cheeseburger, oh my gosh.
We would go get drilling mud off the railhead by Dead Horse Point. That was our twenty-four hour restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, at the time it was the only one.
We had a Westerner down here.
My web. Oh, I've had a, the Westerner Grill.
Was it associated with the Westerner in Salt Lake?
No, no, it was its own thing and I lived in the, when I was sixteen, I lived in the little trailer park right behind it. And we'd be over there drinking and.
You're being recorded right now.
I'm out of the running for commissioner, so it's fine. We'd be over there drinking, we'd just call them up, hey, can we get a couple orders of chili cheeseburgers?
They'd bring it over?
They'd bring it right to the fence and just hand it over to us.
This is before Uber Eats, not.
Oh, yeah, long time before.
It is three oh seven, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, I don't know if I run this meeting or you, Trent.
Go for it.
Okay.
Just go Lloyd.
Roll call. Uh, Administrator Bushnell's here, Commissioner Riggs, Com- Commissioner Riggs, sorry. Chairman Schaefer, Commissioner Wilson, and Commissioner Walker, and Commissioner Austin. We also have Administrator Matt McDonald and Jens Nelson. Um, so just an overview of what we're trying to accomplish today. We're doing this in chunks, um, you'll notice that I only gave you the table of contents for the ordinance, I didn't give you the whole thing, because we're not there yet. Um, so our mission today is to look at the summary of zoning uses. Um, what is permitted within those uses and then coordinate that with the maps that we have built. Um, there's already been a few discussions and, oh. There's already some things we wanna change between Tuesday and today. Um, and so when we get there, we will, I'll let you know our thoughts on that. Um, so the first thing I'd like to look at is just the zoning summaries. And I'll mention right now, one of the things I, that we would like to change is the, uh, we show jurisdiction on all of San Juan County, right? But there is a lot of that space that we have no control over.
One hundred percent.
And so, eh, we felt like it's a little bit misleading with the map to show that we've zoned this as such when it's like National Forest or BLM or.
The tribe.
Yeah, and so, um, one thing we wanna do with the map is, is kind of wipe that out, kind of like the reservation. Wipe it out, because we don't have any jurisdiction on National Forest land, we don't have any jurisdiction on BLM, we technically don't have any jurisdiction on Sitla. You know, they work with us, but technically they don't have to. Um, we have zoned Sitla and we probably will continue to zone Sitla as multi-use or.
Well, and for the simple fact, they'll have to come in for a zone change when they do their project, so it gives us a little more control over what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, and instead of just making it all white, could be labeled that this is forest or this is. I mean, I think that would be helpful. If something butts up against Navajo Nation versus the forest versus the monument versus.
Just so we can kinda see, maybe different, differing grays or differing.
Yeah, just some way of distinguishing.
We have a joke with all the colors, by the way, like egg white, shell white, sea shell white.
It's for all the colors.
We have Pepto Bismol pink and raspberry pink. Okay, so yeah, that's just one thing we just wanted to kinda clarify, because we get called all the time and it's like, we don't have any jurisdiction there. Okay, so let's jump into the zoning summaries. Um, would you like me to read through them, do we wanna go one by one, or do we wanna just, maybe let's go semi-one by one? And I'll tell you a little bit about what we're thinking for each one. So our first one is that Spanish Valley, the Sitla Special Planned Area. Um, one thing to note in this area, let me all, over here. I'm running, I'm running too, but the mouse won't be that far away. So Sitla's main goal is housing, and that's gonna be important to keep in mind later. Um, so that's looking at this, this plan. Um, and again, they're on their own thing. So their zones don't necessarily match up with ours, like, it's their own jurisdiction, their own planned community. Um, but we need to keep this in mind while we have our discussion about what's happening around it. Um, so just keep that in mind as we proceed. Um, residential areas. Uh, obviously trying to get residential zones in there, there was something in Utah code um, that we, everything's still under legal review, this is very drafty. Um, but there is something that we can't totally outlaw overnight rentals in residential, we have to allow something. So a lot of areas are going to like a percentage, so for instance, ten percent of residential and it can't be, every three doors have to be long-term versus overnight. Um, so we could think of some of those stipulations as we move forward in the ordinance, um, which we'll be looking at next month.
Do you actually have that statute available?
We could find it, it's in, it's in one of my like, dig it up.
Okay.
Um, so we'll look at that a little bit closer as we go through the ordinance, hopefully in a couple weeks. Um, so probably, we probably won't hit it tonight, but there is something along those lines in there that we'll have to decide what to do with.
Is there a, um, are we gonna get the actual draft ordinance like a week before, I mean, we need time to read it. Ninety-some odd pages or however.
It's, it's one hundred and eighty right now.
Hundred and eighty, we need time to read it.
And you need to know word for word, because we're living it.
I think two of us have.
Cleaned up enough at all, so we're, we're still really diving into that. Um, but we're gonna set up at the end of this meeting a work session for June. Um, I probably will not back that one with a planning commission, because that, going through that ordinance is gonna be hefty. Um, so it's residential, agricultural, um, looking to support ag stuff, highway commercial, um, community commercial. The colors are really close on community commercial, which is raspberry pink, multiple use, which is Pepto Bismol. So we're gonna work on that with the maps. So that's already on our list. Um, industrial, and then there's a new one that we have not seen before, some of you old timers, which is recreational support. We have some very strategic spots in this county that it would behoove us to try to get a gas station in or lodging or some kind of services that would help support recreation. Boat launches, hiking outfitters, that sort of thing. Um, one spot in particular, just to like throw out there, is the area around Fry Canyon. I mean, going from Blanding to Hanksville is a very lonely road. And if you're running out of gas, there is not a prayer for you up there. And so, um, as we get more people coming to visit those kinds of areas, how do we provide recreational support so that people aren't too far out? Um, and I will say from an EMS perspective, people don't realize how far out they are. We had a rollover down by Goose Next, and this guy's like, well, I'll just get to a big city like Mexican Hat and get a rental car. Like, no. And then he's like, well, can I just take an Uber into Flagstaff? And I'm like, no. So I, we're getting more tourists that are more out of their element and we need to provide some safety netting for that, it's kind of, it's kind of in repercussions of having a bunch of tourists out here. Um, you know, the overly loving is happening.
You know, to that point, uh, it might behoove us, i- if you go over to Saint George and you take some of their roads, they put up those big signs that say you don't have cell service.
We have them.
Really big.
Yeah, no services for a hundred and twenty-nine miles.
Right.
You still get that guy out there.
Okay.
And without any cell phone service, you're waiting for somebody to pick you up.
They don't associate services with cell service.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, they're more like no cell, I mean, I, I know what you're talking about, but they're very specific.
You are on your own, will lead you to die.
That's, that's right.
Um, that might cut down on tourism out there. Um, so those, those are some of the zones, that recreational support zone. Uh, it's still very much in the works with our legal team of, of what's possible, but we wanted to open up that discussion of what you guys would like, would like to see. Um, and then we'll kind of bounce it around with them. So I think our next step is probably the use table. Um, and again, you have seen all of this, if you have been on this working set for the last couple years. Um, we have not changed, or we've changed very little, I should say, um, of this table.
Is this ours?
Um, this is what we currently, so you would have worked with this with Scott Burton.
Have you ever seen this before?
Not, I'm aware of.
Okay, all right, maybe not, never mind.
So you haven't seen this one before? This is, I think this is even online, that version. So this hasn't changed.
In a couple years.
Since then, other than you would have that.
Mac, would you mind hitting us onto the use table on that computer? If you would please.
Is it not on? Okay.
Sorry, the mouse won't, the mouse won't pick up all this far over.
Let me find it.
It should be on that first left tab. It's already up, yeah.
Right here.
Um.
Cause you can't see it, cause it's so big.
So I think, I don't know how you guys wanna do this, if you wanna go by zone and go down the list, or if you just wanna go down the list and look at each zone. Um, there are a few things we might, uh, put in here since this was created. Uh, for instance, uh, primitive camping has become the next hot fad moneymaker. Um, I'm getting a lot of applications for primitive camping, and so, um, you know, that's something that didn't exist in twenty twenty.
That should be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, so that's probably gonna be under. I can't remember if we.
Well, there's a camping, there's a camping in here.
Camping, but not primitive camping.
Be like commercial camping.
Yeah. So let's just go down, this is our first kind of task for you guys, now that you have kind of the zones and what we're thinking for each one. Um, let's go in here and start marking it up, what you wanna see, what you don't wanna see. Um, so that first line, I think we'll just go line by line and across, okay? So accessory buildings, um, not for human occupancy, so this is your sheds and garages. Highway commercial, we haven't designated yet. I think, I feel like this one should be permitted all the way across.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Okay, accessory dwelling units.
Wait just a second, what is a rural, what's a rural?
Recreational protection district? We're probably getting rid of that.
Okay, cause it's not on our list.
So.
Right, we're probably getting rid of that one, it's, it's like BLM land. Around Ken's Lake, which we don't have jurisdiction over. So I really, I've, I have fought, I hate that name, and it's not telling, and I just don't like it. So that one's probably gonna be dissolved, because, because what we have classified as rural recreation protection district is federal land right now.
Okay.
So I don't feel like we should say anything on that, so delete that column. Um, so accessory dwelling units. Um, a dwelling, and this is very, this is getting into the nitty-gritty. In order for it to count as a dwelling, this is where people are finding a loophole. It has to have an affixed, like kitchen unit, so an affixed stove. So this is, the loophole people are taking right now is a tough shed with a bed in it and a counter and a sink and a plug-in hot plate, and they're like, it's not a dwelling. Um, so we need to, we'll be careful with how we word that, so people are not taking, taking that. So when I read this list, accessory dwelling unit would be, once we redefine what dwelling is, so there's no loopholes there. Um, you know, any place that somebody is sleeping at night.
Yep.
If you have people sleeping there overnight, that is a dwelling unit.
You have nothing in the recreational support.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't determined anything in there yet.
Okay.
So we need to, we need to come up with all of that.
I think that one should be permissible, that's usually your employee housing for an area like that.
Okay, does anybody have any other comments on that?
Makes sense to me.
Especially because those recreational zones are way out there.
Yep.
Okay.
Why is it conditional on highway commercial?
Because you can't have living quarters in highway commercial unless they're second story?
Yeah, I think we're worried about Walmart and then having the tough shed that somebody's sleeping in, like, next to their parking lot.
You wanna, you wanna be sure what they're doing, so if they're gonna do, um, employee housing, that you know where they're going.
Thank you.
So Kristen, is this accessory building, is it tied to, is it tied to another legal dwelling, like a caretaker almost, so?
It can and can't be.
Is another loophole people are finding?
They can, they, they can either be attached, most of your ADU units are either attached to your primary dwelling with the proper firewall, or they're detached with your minimum five-foot distance for your fire separation.
However, some people have been loophole-ing it with the, it's under the same roof, separate entrance out back, no firewall. So we're gonna have to be careful with our definition again, people are really loophole-ing this one in a lot of ways.
Which, but, which you only have to have an hour fire raid wall if this, if it's owned by the same person. And then it changes it when the separation be two hours, which one hour firewall is only two layers of five-eight, so it's one on each side. So it's no different than what you would have, you know.
Anyways.
Yeah.
A regular building.
Mm-hmm, yep. So, I mean, that, that's, that's your fire separation.
That's a fact, everyone would never know.
Now, our intent, again, our intent is, maybe they've got this studio out back that they're renting to grandma or college kid or whatever, or they've got the basement apartment, or they've got the, you know, there's a breezeway in between the two units. Um, and, and the ordinance right now has this restricted on only one ADU per lot.
Couldn't an eighty, I mean, I'm just thinking of what I see all the time, couldn't like a fifth wheel be an ADU?
Nope.
No, and that is another thing we're really working through right now, is, is RVs and pull behind camp trailers, because a lot of people are living in them, so that's, we'll get there, that's a separate discussion, this is concrete.
This is a structure.
Stick-built.
Okay.
Non-mobile. Do we wanna do any changes with that? Um, community commercial, we have it prohibited, our intent with community commercial is kind of that low and slow mom and pop shops. Lots of homegrown business.
I, I think that one.
Should we permit it there?
No, conditional for the simple fact that, that same thing, so I buy me a little small commercial place.
You're doing a sand shop in the sand.
Where I can, I can live upstairs and run my business below.
Okay.
Um, I think that should be a conditional use.
Depending on the use of business, obviously we don't want like a paint shop with a studio upstairs.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Which those have to be registered through the state anyway, with ventilation and everything else, that falls out of the building department's jurisdiction.
Um, ag industry or business. This is talking about big ag.
Yeah, and I don't know why that'd be conditional use in agricultural.
Yeah, why isn't that permitted?
Is it the chemicals?
Yeah, but we have no control over the chemicals on a farm. What's that?
Feed law.
Yeah.
I think that's where, like on a feed law, if you're, you would only look at the waste, water table.
Yeah.
Kind of all of that aspect of it, which is where I would see it being more conditional, because then if it's just permitted, then there's really no public health review.
So we have big ag come in, you're like, well, what do you wanna do, pitch us a NDA?
Right.
Got the big hog farms over in Hillard or, what county is that over there?
Beaver.
Beaver?
Mac is the same thinking about why you would want it.
Bunch of problems with that, and the water.
Yeah, with the water, is that why it's, the thinking is it's also conditional for industrial?
Yes.
Same thing, okay.
And then I take it we want it prohibited in recreational support? No hog farm next to the boat launch?
Right. So I've gotta hang up on conditional use right now, after watching what happened this week in, with Grand County. I mean, talk about a terrible situation, I mean, they, they, they have a, an ordinance, a zoning and ordinance in place that was approved down Kane Creek. Have you been following this? So they, so it belonged to, um, Jim Nelson's dad. And back in the eighties, it was approved for a trailer park and a camp park and stuff down Kane Springs. This company comes in, they do their due diligence, and they, you know, this is the ordinance it's in, blah, blah, blah. They purchase the land for top dollar. They go in, they get approved for what they're doing. Well, they've got millions of dollars invested in engineering, architects, the purchase of the land, all this. They start the dirt work, they're, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars in dirt work. And so they contact the city and the county on water and sewer connection, no. So they go to the state, the state says yes, well, you know, you can put in your sewer plant, you have to hit these designs, but it does require a CUP. They go to Grand County this last week.
Take your order?
They go to Grand County this week, and they turn down the CUP, so now they're dead in the water. Yeah, because it does not meet the master plan of the city of Moab in Grand County. So tell me the definition of what you can do with a conditional use permit. I- isn't it a permissible with conditions? And, and for the, and, and the reason you have conditions is to make it work with the surrounding properties in the surrounding areas. Um, there's nothing else around them, so how can they legally do that?
Well, and this is still in court, probably.
Well, a- and I understand that, but, but this board could go, we, we start throwing everything in a conditional use, all of a sudden, this board just starts dictating everything that happens. And, yeah, well, lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit.
The conditional use process is just to mitigate the hazards, life, safety, health, of the general public, that's.
Exactly.
All it is, those are the only conditions that you really look to mitigate through.
Right.
And at least on our.
It's not a means to stop the development.
Right.
To be able to, when you, when you do your findings, and we've kind of always trained you, if you're, if you deny this, you have to state those facts with substantial evidence of, hey, this can't be mitigated here.
Right.
And so therefore, we're not allowing this use, because there's no means to mitigate it, but if you don't have those.
So, but my other point on this is, you know, um, like you say, it's still in court, li- litigation. So if the, the, the company that's doing it was you or I, we get turned down. Now, how much does it cost us to get an attorney to appeal this? Because in, in ten years, this board, this board flips, we don't know who's here. I mean, all of a sudden, there, it's, it's you as an individual getting an attorney to fight a decision that was made to appeal it.
Well, I mean, this, I feel like we have some protections in place, say that now. Because on our certificate, like the certificate, it states exactly what the conditions are. It states an expiration, that if you don't start within this time, and so that's the thing, like, people can't come in and get a conditional use from our board and then hold on to it for five years.
Right.
Doesn't work like that, like, you come in, you get it, we approve it now, and you better be starting within.
It's a use, I mean, it has to have a use.
And so I.
But it's, it's the process right before that.
Is messy, very messy.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully we have, have looked at that enough to deter that back situation. And maybe we wanna look at it again, that, that certificate, we just built it when I came on board in December. And, but we could redo it again, the attorneys looked at it, we got language from like the recorder's office, and everybody looked at it to try to keep us out of this.
Well, as long as everybody that takes a seat at this table has the complete understanding of what a conditional use permit is. I mean, there should never be a problem with it, if you have the understanding.
As well as your minutes, and you've all made comment to this, your min, the minutes now are not just summarized. Like, there, we put the findings in there, and your discussion, so that you have that picture, if you go away, we still have why that was approved in your thoughts and that discussion about why this was approved. And so you take like, you know, there, LaSalle Junction and the helicopter paths, that whole discussion is in the minutes, just because of that. You know, it's now, we have the detailed minutes for the record of why this was approved.
Yeah, we're getting better, trial by fire, we're getting better at, at stating exactly, because of that reason, if somebody else takes over.
Well, it's like the BFE thing.
Yeah.
That was a, I mean, how much research did you guys do to figure out exactly what it was?
I think, Lloyd, to summarize kind of where you're coming from maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong. Conditional use means, yeah, I would like to see this here, but we wanna know what you're doing.
And the conditions that help govern this, why it's allowed.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, we would like to see that, but pitch us a health, safe, safety idea.
And that decision was made by public climber. Oh, one hundred percent. Yep.
Okay, so are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Lloyd said Trent was already, we're on the third line. Okay, agriculture, um, in residential, we said permitted, um, we could look at that more, if you want me to just flag it for now, of what agriculture and residential looks like. Um, and we could talk more deeply about it next time when we have the ordinance in front of us.
I, a- and I think residential, you should not have agricultural.
Prohibited.
I, I think it is, I, that's my opinion. For the simple fact, I mean, we have a lot more areas that you can purchase to do ag in. Um, you s, cause especially now, we have culinary water and sewer in places now, we're, we're, have a lot more dense housing, quarter acres. Now, you know, I know, I think in the SVR, you have to have a minimum of an acre to have one horse.
Animals, huh?
Yeah, so, I mean, you could word it that way, but at the same time, I think all our one-acre parcels are gonna start thinning out. I think it just needs to be kind of a non-permissible use in residential.
Okay, well, I, I'm gonna fl-. Okay, well, I'm gonna flag it until we have the ordinance in front of us. Um, because like you're saying, do we wanna mix livestock in the backyard?
Right, right.
Gets weird. I appreciate livestock in my backyard. Um, under ag, it's permitted, there's different animal densities, we can look at that a little bit more as we dive into the ordinance. No highway commercial, no community commercial, multi-use, yes, same thing, animal densities. Um, industrial, it's commercial, so think of your feedlot situation. Or I'm sorry.
Conditional.
It's conditional in industrial. Um, and then that last, I'm just gonna cross off that whole column, so I stopped looking at it. Okay, so this one we'll flag for next time.
There's something in state code with agriculture as well. We've got to go through and marry it. So like right now, I'm in a residential zone in La Salle, I have three sheep and a pile of chickens. And yeah, I'm in a residential zone, but state code changed to where you can have chickens, you know, in residential areas. Um, and then the sheep were for. Like four H, and so things like that can be allowed. Under state code and and so. Marry together.
Cause well, the chickens fall under different.
Chickens are for.
Yeah, they, yeah, they fall under a different thing. I and the reason I'm. Thinking of this is right across from the high school, Holylands Place. The worst smelling place in town.
So we'll look at state code and just make sure that we're okay there.
So does our code, if if there's a contradiction and we don't catch it, which code? State, state's over, it, okay, it trumps.
We cannot be no less than what the state requires, be more.
Okay. So next one, agriculture type three, animal density. This is your very high density uh feedlots. And we have that only per- only conditional in agriculture. And again, we're looking at that on a case by case. We good there? Okay, this one's a hot one right now, airports and airstrips. Um, I think one, one thing to note is what do we wanna do in recreational support? People flying into remote areas, it seems like it should be conditional there.
So so like there's an airstrip uh along, what's the road between, what is it, between landing and and height?
It's the Fry Canyon.
Yeah, there's one at Fry Canyon, there's another one, Cal Black, on your way between. The turnoff and halls crossing, there's another airport out there, and right now, they're just brush jumpers.
And so, and so, but if somebody wanted to come along and develop those, they could.
Permit and then it would be based on a conditional. Factors.
And one of those would be dealing with, you know, federal regulations for air airstrips.
But if they're already um recognized.
Well, like there's one out in Valley of the Gods, like there's a, we actually have a bunch of.
Yep.
A new one on a resort. So there's things like that that we would wanna look through and and try to to mitigate it, the safety. And so we do have a bunch of. Backcountry airstrips throughout county that are half on county roads and half on B L M. So and they are utilized surprisingly.
Yeah, I will say, I I've been out flying with them, they come down, there's a big group that comes down at least twice a year together. Plus them coming down on their own to fly these these backwoods airstrips. So and and when they come, they stay and they drop their money here, so economically, like they are. They're coming in and dropping some money while they're here.
Do, so does the new ordinance have anything in it specifically for airports and airstrips?
Okay. And we even went as far as, um, you know, with some of the things on our mind right now. Um, like air air, what do they call those, hangar homes? And condo mixed use where you literally park your plane in your garage sort of situation. Because that is, we have some ideas right now, there's been chatter about other areas doing that sort of thing. And so, um, how do we address that? But air, looking at this, it's just airport airstrip only.
I like it.
Just a thought about something that would be helpful is for all of these. It would be really a good idea if we had a reference to where they show up in the new zoning ordinance. Because if I look at the table of contents, I don't see anything that says airstrips. So it would be helpful if we had.
Okay, I think it is actually. Cause I know we just were, it's a new section we're making.
Okay, I just did a quick scan, don't see it, but I'm known for being wrong and, um. But it would, it would be really helpful to see, you know, agriculture's defined in what section?
Um. Do, could. Could we, because it is defined in the definitions of the ordinance? So I don't, I don't wanna clutter this too much. Um, so I'm trying to think of a clean way to do that.
Well, more or less, this is, this is, this will be the Bible, starting with.
Right, so if it's, if we literally have all of these in chapter one definitions, is that good enough? Or do you wanna reference like page sixty-three under every one of these?
Yeah, I think it's.
Like right here.
Yeah, so you don't have to go looking through the whole thing, yeah.
It could be referenced multiple places though.
Yeah.
But it'd be like a table of contents, right, you know, you know.
Well, have, maybe we just need to focus on the ones that are most likely to have, that we're gonna have to address, like airstrips, but not so much. Apiaries.
You know, the, if there's one thing I've learned in the last four and a half months, is that you don't know what's coming. Like the primitive camping fad, I mean, the last few weeks, it's just blown up. I'm like, what the heck, no, we had one, one primitive camping down by Mexican Hat. I'm getting like three or four phone calls a week. So all of a sudden, we just don't know, like, who knows when apiary is gonna pick back up?
Okay, maybe a bad example, but.
But yeah, I I think if we do the page reference, we'll just reference everything and.
That did pop up a couple of months ago out of the Eastland.
The apiary. Um, so speaking of apiaries, permitted in ag, multi-use and industrial. Um, I'm assuming we want to prohibit that in recreational support.
Okay, I didn't look up apiary, that's a bee, that's a bee farm, right?
Could be your bird farms.
Yeah, we have a seagull farmer out in Eastland.
It could be a bird farm too, so if I had, but it's a bee, but it's bees too, right?
But I thought aviary.
That's aviary, apiary.
Apiaries bees.
So if I have a house and I have a couple of bee boxes. Does that mean?
Thing, yeah.
That's a thing, so it is a thing, more and more.
I'm not sure at what point, like you having a bee box or two, not for commercial use.
Not for commer- yeah.
You know, or cottage industry, cause people, I, one day I might have honey again, but like cottage industry versus. Apiary, I feel like is heading into like a commercial, you got sixty boxes out back. Do we want to define apiary as two or more boxes?
Not knowing enough about apiaries, what is it, what is a good number, I have to ask.
I mean, as a bee bee rancher down in Bluff, Utah, I've had up to six backyard.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think it.
But I think for like home use, not getting too out of control, I would say two.
Well, what if you said apiary business?
Or commercial apiary?
Yeah, for commercial use, apiary for commercial. So it still keeps it in the A column. This is gonna take a really long time if we keep going like this. Um, and we're not gonna get to the maps, I'm concerned. Any suggestions?
To this, this is in your packet, so you can go through this as well and just mark it up and.
Okay, we'll try to speed it up here. Apparel manufacturing permitted in industrial.
I don't know why that's the only basis.
Multi-use? Multi-use highway commercial, community commercial?
And it's conditional? But I mean, could we make it conditional in highway, commercial and multiple use? Let's see, what do they define apparel, I mean, that's the thing is, what is apparel manufacturing? What degree, is it, you know, cottage where you're just making your own little?
I mean, I I do think when we read through these, in general, let's keep in mind like commercial use. Versus cottage industry wouldn't count. Okay, so permitted in both highway, commercial and community, commercial?
I think so.
Okay, auto accessories. Farm machinery. I feel like that should maybe be permitted.
So what is this category? Where's your paper edge? I'd say permitted in.
Highway commercial? And what about industrial, that seems like it should be permitted in industrial as well. How about community, commercial?
Say permitted. Wait. Yes, the next one, no.
Automobile service stations, including minor and major repair work, red does not constitute as a junk or salvage yard. We wanna open those up to be permitted?
Let's say permitted in highway, commercial. As long as it's not a junk or savage salvage.
And condit- s- keep it conditional in community, commercial? Or do you wanna open that up to be permitted in community, commercial?
Say permitted again. And even in industrial.
Okay, and how about recreational support, gas stations out there in the boonies?
I would think so.
Or do you wanna do that one as conditional? Depending on the location.
I'd make it conditional.
Okay.
Potentially be a hazard, seems like it should be a condition. Use, like if they're dumping transmission fluid. From cars out in the middle nowhere.
You're gonna get more of that in everybody's backyards than you are at a professional shop, in my opinion.
Well, the other, the other thing is, we're still, it's not hands off, you know, if the neighbor calls in, yo, they just dumped a bunch of diesel down the gutter.
Right.
That's a, that's a health, health, safety issue.
D E Q.
Is there a reason it's not permitted in industrial?
We just said we wanted, we wanted to change it.
Yeah, okay, I didn't hear that.
It seems like it should be.
It should be.
Okay, aviary, farm and seagulls, we like where that's at, and then. Um, prohibited in recreational support.
I think that's fine, if somebody wants to do an aviary and it, they're in the wrong zone, they could ask for a variance or whatever, are you conditional?
Well, it'd be a zone change.
Or a zone change, they could.
Um, bakery, bakery products, and remember, this is like commercial. Um, I feel like we should allow it along highway and community.
Yep.
Multi-use. Definitely.
Yep.
Recreational support.
Sure.
Okay, bakery is in a a deli counter.
Now, just second, bakery products manufacturing sure in recreational support?
Bakery products, like a commercial, oh, maybe, this would be like Sarah Lee Factory.
You want that in recreational support?
Maybe we don't, we want bakery deli.
Bakery products, ma- no, we don't want that in recreational support.
So the next one, yes.
So, so I changed that, don't worry, so the bakery deli counter.
Yes.
Um. Conditional in highway or do you wanna just make it permitted? Okay. Banks and financial institutions.
I, and the bakery, I think should be permitted in.
In in recreational.
Industrial.
Oh, okay.
The bakery and deli should be permissible on all except for residential.
I'm even thinking residential. If you had little bakery in the middle of the neighborhood.
Garages turned into bakeries and residential.
Okay. Okay, banks, other financial institutions.
I think banks should be the same as the bakery permitted.
Permitted across board.
Mm-hmm, except for residential.
And not in recreational support.
No.
Barber shops, permitted?
Except for residential.
And ag, right, or do you wanna open that up? Or should we try to preserve ag as ag?
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, beverage manufacturing, so Coca-Cola wer- warehouse.
I don't know. Trent makes some good beverages in his garage, so.
I'm, I'm not sure we wanna take up, my only hiccup with making this permitted across board is, do we really wanna? Take up highway, commercial space, it could be used for economic development with a Coca-Cola manufacturing.
So more or less keep, keep all of our.
Yeah, so it's permitted in industrial right now. So yeah, we also need to to consider preserving those zones for what they will. Okay, uh, big box retail. Right now, it's conditional in highway, commercial.
Impermissible on what?
It's permitted in multi-use, should we permit it in industrial?
If it's retail.
So should we open that up to highway, commercial? I mean, I, I would think so.
Industrial.
So in your, in your multiple use, we we've got residential and multiple use, right?
It's mixed, so that's like your Walmart with an apartment building behind it.
Right, so I mean, we've got, we've got residential and that, we, do you want a big box store? In a multi-use when we have industrial and commercial?
I don't know, dude.
Probably not.
Develop a whole master plan.
May do or not do if you, based on that, you know, cause if you have a small Walmart and then behind it, like say.
So do conditional on the multi-use. Because I I think they need to have a a good master plan coming in, if they're doing a big box and some residential with it.
That's a good idea.
But permissible in like highway, commercial.
And.
An industrial.
The question is, when these. The question is, when these, if they were to come in, is there an issue with the highway access and all of that that could?
They do have to work with UDOT. Bike shops. Permitted across board?
Oh, that's true.
It's like a Harley.
Do we want it permitted in recreational support?
I don't think so.
You got a flat tower way out there in Fry Canyon.
Yeah, you go to the, you go to the automobile service station.
Well, let's think about this, let's think about like spider bikes and MOLAB. What if I fly into Fry Canyon? I can rent a bike at the bike shop and take off down those dirt roads.
Yeah, I think we would wanna consider that because anywhere you can rent a bike, they probably have their own.
Can, can I get a better definition on that? Cause when you say bike shop, I'm thinking pedal bike.
I think it's, I think it's a pedal.
It is a pedal bike.
Okay, this is not a motorized.
Let me write down here pedal bike.
Thank you. Non-motorized, non-motorized bike shop.
So we do wanna make it permitted in recreational support?
One hundred percent. And don't sell water.
Right now, highway, commercial, do you wanna open that up to be permitted?
On highway, commercial and multi-use make. I, I think it should be conditional use in. No, I think if, but highway, commercials should be permitted. And then.
Multi-use permitted or?
No, conditional on that one. Because you, you, it, it is that whole, we gotta weigh. You know, the safeties and everything with it being mixed with other things, so I think a, a lot of things we're gonna see in the. You know, bowling alleys bring in prostitution and drugs and.
I mean, I, okay, alright, we'll give it a first run.
And, and, and I, I think it could also be in industrial because sometimes when in a, a business goes out, a bowling alley will go.
Cause there's just a big. So conditional for industrial? I wanna make sure that we're keeping the consistency with multi-use. And so I'm like, if we have barber shops and banks permitted in multi-use. I kinda feel like bowling alley should be, you're right, they bring in prostitutes.
But you look at, look at the size though, too. You know, little barber shop, deli, things like that, or, yeah, and they're, and they're mostly closed after five o'clock where a bowling alley. Nine times out of ten is gonna have a bar and it's twelve, one o'clock.
Okay, I like that. Um, recreational support, do we wanna allow bowling alleys? Building materials and hardware stores. Permitted for highway commercial?
Say permitted.
Okay, how about for ag, do we wanna open that up?
I don't think so. I think that's a zone change, if, if they find a bit, good piece, they need to zone change.
Development to the point that they're like, hey, we could get a lumberyard out here.
Right, yeah. I would say permitted in industri- industrial as well.
Buildings to support public utilities, now there's some laws along this one. Um, so this would be like Emery Telecom has a little shed out there to support whatever they got going. So. I'm not sure that we have much jurisdiction on that.
We should add conditional permitted to the recreational support areas.
You wanna do conditional?
Yeah, I would think so.
Um, how about highway, commercial, do you wanna just make that permitted? I mean, there's already huge power lines and everything else running down that corridor. But in residential and recreational support conditional. Okay, bus terminals. Ooh, this one's gonna get tricky with recreational support. No, no, it's not, it's just like you buy a ticket at the counter and hop on the bus.
This is like they, this isn't like a.
This is Greyhound.
This is Greyhound. Why is it conditional in highway, commercial?
Maybe for transportation planning, general planning. I, I think it should tentatively be permitted. Okay, do we wanna open that up to industrial as well? Are we preserving industrial enough as we go? Somewhere for nitty gritty chemicals to be in this world? Or do you think we're permitting too much in there? Oh, so you keep going, think about that.
Well, so why, why did whoever created this table in the first place put the Cs in the Ps where they did? There's gotta be some reasoning for why something, so, so if we're gonna make something more lenient and permit it. We should find out why it was conditional in the first place.
I think going back to what Max said, the conditional usually is around a life safety issue. So are we infecting the water supply or are we?
Right, and then ten seconds that we're considering every one of these categories. Are we really doing it due diligence to think about all of the?
And they're still gonna have to go through, like, if we had a bus terminal, they're still gonna have to work with UDOT for like an extra turn lane and. D cell, X cell lanes and all, so it's not just our. Jurisdiction, like they'd have to work through all that permitting on the back end of.
But you know what I'm saying, why are these, some of them Cs to begin with? I mean, Alex Skolbo got this document from some.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right, but if you took it from some other, you know, county, for example. Then there may be a reason why that, that is that way.
If you think on a bus terminal, it's like, well, what conditions would I place, I mean? You can put on there, no buses can arrive after eleven, but. If the line and that's the route and that's the time, like we really wouldn't have a choice. So what else could I? What other conditions could I place on a terminal?
And I think by us.
Just because we can't come up with the reason right now doesn't mean that, you know, the question is still just why.
Why was it there originally?
You know, as time goes on, we learn more about what's likely to happen. And how scary we need for industrial versus how much we need for having. And you know, if we thought that. We'd probably say, well, let's not allow some of these other things in there because we don't wanna have someone use that space and then. Big industrial wants to come in and there's no more left, same with having commercial. So with time, I think just the awareness of what's going on would cause some of these to change. Other than that, you're right, if there's a reason, the county has a different idea about kind of the future.
The likelihood of a terminal, I could see it in the future in Spanish Valley, maybe. Seven eleven here, Monticello is kind of acts as if this is kind of the Greyhound bus stop. For the Salt Lake. And so it's just kind of an ad hoc. Type, you'll never see a. A depot like a Salt Lake City type style here.
Well, I'm not concerned about bus terminals specifically, but just this.
In general.
The, just this approach of like. This particular group of five people get to change the use table.
It's cause we have great ideas here.
Well, it's not that, it's just, you know, we are literally giving each one of these about ten seconds of consideration.
I think just like Jen said, though, is, is over time, and I, and I agree with you here too, but over time. We learn who's, who's laying everything is and like, at some point, like it's not really our job to say. The health department has to do this, like the health department's gonna do their job and through the permitting process, they're gonna get the permits and it's not. Our job to enforce that or anything like that, so.
Well, maybe just some background on like permitting, like anything going in has to have health department approval, fire department approval. That's on the, that's on the tellend of building permitting and.
You've got road department or DOT and.
And I guess that's what I'm wondering here is back when this was put in is maybe there's less understanding about that stuff, so it's just like, we just need to. Make sure everything comes through us, whereas.
Well, and I would, I would say the fewer. Mac might smack me for this, the fewer conditionals, probably the better. Because if it's permitted, people who are buying property are gonna look at this list and say. What could possibly go up next door?
Right, yeah.
More conditional uses, you have the more control you have over the development, but it's all gotta be a mitigation factor that you're trying to. To control and so.
Right, so we wanna save some of that industrial space.
For industrial use.
Large, for a large operation. So we could conditional, you know, if we have conditional uses for another operation, we could say, you know, we want yours to be a little smaller. And not take up all of the space, or i- it's a way to negotiate those. Maximize the use of the space. If it's conditional, but if you just permit it, then you don't get to come back and say, well. Um, that's, you know, that's really eating up all of what our inventory.
Well, I, I think kind of taking the bowling alley example, like, we need to consider what is full build out look like. Is a bowling alley that's open until two o'clock in the morning going to have adverse effects on the gas station that's open twenty-four seven next door? No, so then it should just be permitted. You know, those are kind of in harmony, going back to that word, you know. And so as we go through this list and continue down here, like. Are the uses and hours that they're being used and busyness of it? Are they similar in harmony?
Yeah, so what are those parameters that we're looking at when we're considering what should go where, like hours of business?
I, all of it.
Harmony.
All of it.
So what is all of it like?
Zen garden.
Right, well.
You wanna be able to dictate those, you know, and have a say and. Try to protect the neighbors around it, well, the uses that are around it. That's what your conditional use provides you, whether permitted, you lose that.
Guys, we're one hour into the.
Okay, camping. Ag, it's permitted, multi-use permitted, recreational support, I definitely think should be permitted. Um, I would say multi-use and ag, we should probably do conditional.
What kind of camping?
Is this an RV park?
I don't know, maybe we need to break it down to camping RV, camping tent sites, camping, glamping.
I mean.
So why don't we, why don't we look at camping next time? Cause I do think you're right, I think we need to break it down, is this tents or RVs or what?
With everything that we've been seeing for the last couple of years, there's, you got your glamping, you've got camping, you've got RV parks.
Hip camps. Okay, so let's just put that one on hold till we get the next one.
Other than, right now, we have camping permitted everywhere. So if you conditionally use some of those.
I think with the primitive camping stuff, I think that should definitely be a conditional.
You all have a chapter in the ordinance called primitive camping resorts.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because of the new fad, we had to.
Or just change that one to commercial camping.
Okay, I think breaking it, breaking it down is where to go, we'll look at it. Okay, commercial canning. Permitted in industrial, anywhere else?
So this is. This is any commercial canning, that kind of stuff, so I couldn't.
So be like.
I couldn't have a home business that.
Home business is totally okay, nope, totally okay, that's cottage industry.
Okay, gotcha.
So this is warehouse canning.
Gotcha.
Okay, childcare.
Put them in the industrial tariff.
Again, not, this is, this is not home occupation childcare, so when you read this list, not. Sally running a little daycare out back, this is like a big daycare.
And I don't, I'm not comfortable with it being a conditional and residential. No, I don't want kids in my neighborhood.
But there's a reason why someone made that a C, cause if some situation came up where they needed it to be a C. You know, I don't know if it's a.
Too road width, is it along the highway, is it?
Is, is there a, somebody that lives in the neighborhood that's not safe?
Are you on a dirt road compared to a, or asphalt?
One of your neighbors hates kids.
I don't know, I mean, I was just posing the question as far as our knee jerk reaction is to permit everything, but.
I, I think we should leave it conditional and residential.
Well, I, so looking, looking ahead, we have public education facility which. In my mind, what's the difference between, there is a s- a slight difference, but childcare versus a preschool.
How did you get to the Ps already?
I was just thinking ahead, like what does that, what does it fall into? And I'd be like, it'd kind of be more of a school type of environment. And, and they don't match up, the Ps and the Cs don't match up across the board.
Yeah, I think this is a much smaller occupancy load.
This is like the state allows five kids in the house. Type thing.
This would be like twenty kids in a little.
I know, it could be like the backyard playground, noisy, that's could be noisy or something like that.
So conditional, keep the kids quiet, put duct tape over their mouth, please?
Question of whether that have it permitted versus conditional or not permitted versus conditional.
I'm, I'm saying not conditional.
And I'm saying conditional.
I just wasn't sure if, if you were thinking it should be in residential, but maybe.
No, we weren't thinking permitted. It's either conditional or, or not at all. Not permissible, that's where.
And I guess that's where I'm coming from is cause I would, I mean, I would rather that backyard playground full of kids than. An elementary school in my backyard, but an elementary school's permitted versus conditional, and I know we haven't got there yet, we could change that.
And there might be some legalities to that with state code.
I think a school's fine, I mean, you look at Red Rock Elementary, it's right in the middle of all residential.
Yeah. Schools, aren't like schools, fire departments.
And that's why you're leaning to permissible and not childcare.
Yeah, I just, I think they're kind of.
Ninety percent of the ones we have down in the valley.
What's that word? The harmony word? Yeah, the harmony word comes to mind there.
So you're thinking permitted?
Well, let's go back to conditional.
Okay, okay, alright, we'll leave it. Okay, church temples and places of worship. I feel like we should just permit that everywhere. If you can find grounds that you wanna put a church on, go for it.
Well, we don't wanna lose ag land.
Well, that's the problem, is they go in and buy the land and then they don't pay taxes on it for twenty years.
We don't have the expertise to make some of these calls.
Do you wanna leave it where it's at? Oh, sorry, these guys.
Yeah, I don't want it in industrial. No.
How about recreational support? For instance, nah, nah, I'm just thinking of, of the uh, like retreat, religious retreats.
Well, they can get one camp permit to do something like that.
Okay, alright, check.
I think Boyd's got a point, we don't want to open the door.
Clinic, medical, dental. Multi-use and community, commercial.
Lloyd, no batteries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for buying these two San Juan County, appreciate it.
I told you I was gonna work you hard.
I don't think, um. I have any issues with clinics, medical and dental being. In any of them, and then on. Residential, it does.
Is this where you have ambulances coming going or?
Not, uh, only on pickups.
None of the clinic.
So like in a clinic though, if somebody comes into a clinic, they'll call in an ambulance to pick them up, take them to a hospital if it's an emergency. Yeah, so we've got the clinic right there on the corner of Old Airport Road. We've only had the ambulance one time since it's been open. Taking somebody up from there.
Yeah, ambulances are gonna run to the hospitals, which is a category of its own.
Okay, so are we happy with where that's at?
I I wonder about highway commercial though, because if you look at it, it's for the traveling public. And if, you know, there it is nice to have places people, people know can stop and to get help. You know.
So having a.
We already have it permitted in community commercial.
Yeah.
Which is where you tend to see those kinda clinics anyways, in the smaller strip malls.
Low and slow. We could open it up to highway commercial.
I'd I'd be okay with that.
We just have a limited amount of highway commercial too. But well, I should speak only for Spanish.
Okay, concrete production, conditional and industrial because of the dust.
Yeah.
Confectionery, this is large scale chocolate factory. Permitted in industrial.
Yep.
Do we also wanna open that up to? Community commercial, like the commercial bakery products above.
I don't think so.
Okay. Contractor, construction services. This is not home-based business. Do you see me now?
So what's an example of this?
Yeah, thank you.
So concrete business would be like a a construction yard.
Like La Grand.
Where, I don't see con- oh, I see. Contractor.
I would like to open this up maybe to community commercial. What do you guys think?
Look, construction, wait, are we on concrete?
Contractor.
Okay.
Construction services.
So you're saying that would be like La Grand?
This is gonna be Joe Schmo's uh, framing and drywall.
Yeah, just like trailers and.
Yeah, community commercials.
Do we wanna open it up to highway commercial? Or do we wanna reserve that for, nope, highway commercial too?
But I'm. I'm prejudiced on that one.
Okay, critical infrastructure, we don't have a ton of, there's um, state laws on gravel pits.
We can't do nothing.
So we can't really do anything there. Uh, cut stone and pro- stone products. Is again, because of dust, conditional and industrial. Dairy products. Conditional and agony.
That one's good, yeah.
Now we're getting there. Okay, daycare centers. So this would be like your adult care homes. Like bigger, bigger institutions, nursing homes.
Assisted living.
Assisted living would be under here. Rehab facilities would be under here.
I think it's perfect, I wouldn't change it.
Wait, why not commercial, um, why not residential?
Do you wanna make it conditional?
It it's a uh, commercialized um.
I mean, think of your big assisted living facilities.
I don't think it's a good idea.
So it's like having the care center?
It's like the one that's connected to the hospital and more.
Center, yeah. Okay, so it's too big for, I see, okay.
Well, it's actually two different kinds of things. Daycare centers don't operate twenty four seven, but nursing and convalescent homes do. So.
I'm gonna cross off daycare centers here.
Yeah.
Okay, drugs and chemicals manufacturing's conditional and industrial.
Or Miss World Residential right here.
Well, that too. Dwellings and multifamily. Um, I think we should revisit this one, I'm gonna make an executive decision, put it on hold. Until we have the ordinance in front of us for chapter seven stuff. Um, dwellings for single family. I don't think we should have that in highway commercial.
I don't either.
I feel like we should cross that off.
Is it, is that a C?
But I think it should be prohibited in highway commercial. That way we don't end up with.
Sunny Acres.
Yes.
What about ag? Why ag?
You wanna, you wanna hold on a bar.
Okay, but so we could, but we could limit how many, cause what if somebody wants to take, turn their ag land into a big subdivision?
Right now, even with our existing, you have one.
The ag ordinance, they would have to change their zoning. To be able to do what your heart is, yes.
Cause I just wanna make sure we are. Protecting what ag land do you have left.
So right now, you can do. You can do accessory dwelling units for ag as long as it is for ag business. For instance, you hired a ranch hand and they're bringing their family to live there. Um, not necessarily an overnight rental situation. Okay, two family dwellings. So duplexes.
Highway commercial, mm, no.
No? Um, sorry, recreational support, do we wanna allow both of these in recreational support?
So the the two families should be the same as the single family.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Okay. I like it. Electrical vehicle charging stations, this is getting to be a lot more popular. I kinda feel like we should just.
Well, now that they're not letting them park them in garage, just to charge them. Did you see that?
Well, there were fires.
Burning.
If some, if an apartment complex goes in and they wanna put a electric vehicle charging station.
And that would be in a residential zone.
Be in a residential zone, I think they should be allowed.
Yeah. Do we wanna do conditional use across the board?
They come in with something.
I would, I would think a conditional use across the board would be appropriate for this.
Or do you wanna do just permitted and we, and the building department upholds the safety end of it?
No, because it should only be. In two zones, right?
We're saying we wanna open it up to all zones.
In residential, you want a big charging station?
Well, if you put in a, if you put an apartment complex in there, they're gonna wanna charging station.
So. That's why when looking at the maps, we don't have a lot of residential land to even worry about this kinda thing. Right?
Well, well, so Sitla, S- Sitla is where most of the housing is. But.
I thought we're not considering their land.
Well. Yes and no, right? We are coordinating with Sitla strongly. Um, so they might defer to a lot of us. But ultimately, they have the final say in what happens there. Now, I believe we still run building permitting there. So it's kinda this weird mesh of accountability.
Just like when she threw us under the bus.
Right, one hundred percent.
Can I say conditional across board?
Well, those are a little bit like.
Well.
If you want people to be able to have those kinda cars, having charging spaces that. Especially in a place where you have like a number of apartments or condos. You kinda want them right there, it'll be close. It'll it'll bring people and have those kinda cars, it's kinda like having a fire hydrant.
And that's, I'm almost wondering if we wanna make this permitted because. Cause you're gonna have people parked there at two o'clock in the morning. Running out of juice and they're sitting there for an hour. So do you want that outside of your house?
I don't.
I think conditional it. So conditional, okay.
Yeah, cause I think, I think um. On a big apartment building. In a residential area, that's gonna be a conditional use anyway. Exactly, and so part of that one, if they're, you know, they're gonna propose a big apartment building in residential zone. Is conditional use, it, which is gonna be part of their conditions, they're they're gonna have.
To live there. Sure, okay. Okay, electrical goods manufacturing? Do we wanna open that up to highway commercial?
No.
No.
Okay. Enclosed storage. I think it should be permitted in highway commercial. Okay, how about community commercial? We do have a lot of people putting in little storage units out back. Industrial?
Is there a hazard with storage? Being, I guess, all the other stuff in community commercial could be considered. I don't want my meth, my neighbor's storage unit with.
How about, how about industrial? Should we permit it?
Is enclosed storage a shed behind or?
It's like, it's like the storage units outside of landing. Yeah, it's like rows of garages.
Okay, as long as I, that's what I would have thought.
Okay. Evaporation ponds, that's gonna be on a legal thing, we don't have too much, excuse me, on that. Um, fabricated metal products is in industrial. I'm go- I'm trying to speed this up. Fabricated textiles. Is industrial. Um, farm equipment and cells. I feel like we should open that up to ag since that's where it is.
I don't think so.
No? You wanna keep it highway commercial? Do you wanna open it up to permitted in highway commercial and community commercial?
I'd say permitted there, both of those.
Okay. Multi-use, do we wanna add it?
No.
Okay. Um, farms for chickens, chicken farming. Um, multi-use, it's permitted, I think we should prohibit that. I don't know where that P came from. Do we want to allow it in industrial as we've kind of set a trend?
I don't know if that's would be really in harmony with the.
Chemical plant next door?
Potentially hazardous businesses next door.
But we do allow for apiaries, aviaries. And high density animals in industrial.
We're being very prejudiced on the animal.
What about peacocks?
No, not allowed anywhere.
So do you wanna, yes, industrial or no?
No.
No, okay. Okay, fast food restaurants. Should we say permitted in highway commercial?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say conditional maybe in recreational support too. We probably want.
Oh, you know what? Do we have restaurant later?
Sometimes uh, those fast food places will be part of the gas station.
Right.
Could we make it conditional?
For recreational?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
So what's the definition on there? That they cook slower? Can they loophole that?
Not drive through window, drive through window.
Oh, I mean, that that actually is what makes it a fast food. Is that in writing?
Not yet.
Cause I mean, uh, uh, what, uh, there's gotta be a loophole around fast food restaurant. Well, we cook slow here, so it's not.
You could do, you could argue uh, well, twenty minutes pretty fast nowadays.
Yeah. Big dogs is no longer a fast food restaurant.
I think we do need to say like with a drive up window would be.
There's some of them don't have that though.
What about a food truck?
We're not there yet.
Not fast food.
It's not?
Yeah, we're, that's.
That seems like the more appropriate kinda business for the residential support. Something not permanent.
I think, don't we have food vendor or? Maybe we need to add that one. Okay, so we'll add food vendor to our list.
Just, why don't we just get rid of fast food? And just have restaurant and then under, under restaurant, we could have the small portable vendors.
So just do little tabs under restaurant?
Cause there is a restaurant.
Truck.
Food service, food service.
There is.
No, I like where you're going with that, like, like, under restaurants have fast food restaurants.
Right.
You know, you're more sit down, food vendors, so we'll, we'll rearrange the list.
Otherwise, we're looking in three different places on this because of the out of the court.
Right. Okay, flex office and warehousing. I feel like it should be permitted in both highway commercial and community commercial.
Yes.
Okay, multi-use, do we wanna make it conditional? Or is it just permitted? Yeah, just permitted. Nah.
You don't get an answer, let's just go.
Okay, food prep. So this is like huge manufacturing, this is uh, Marie Callender's warehouse. Okay, do you wanna make it permitted in industrial?
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, forest industry, sawmills. I don't know why it's permitted in multi-use. Industrial.
Yeah, industrial.
Okay. Funeral homes. Uh, I would say permitted in community commercial.
What about highway?
I don't think it should be on the highway. Should we get rid of it in highway?
I don't think it should be in multi-use, it's creepy.
He doesn't like kids?
Yeah.
People and I don't like kids, okay?
Even though you were both.
Okay, fur goods, that's your mink farm. Conditional, genuine manufacturing. I hate the word general.
Where's your taxidermist?
I don't know, he's not on here yet. That would be in fur goods manufacturing, I think. Here, let me put taxidermy.
You know, my dad was taxidermist.
That makes a lot of sense.
That explains a lot.
That explains a lot, Lloyd.
We, we have to get off the school bus and go stir the barrels.
Um, I would like to take general manufacturing as conditional, just because. We're really opening it up to just general manufacturing, so we need to know what are you manufacturing? And general manufacturing, all other types also conditional. Those seem like one in the same, maybe we'll clump them together. Okay, general retail. Permitted along. Permitted along highway commercial?
Be good with that.
Do we wanna allow it in multi-use?
So, I got a question, can I back this up just a bit?
Sure.
So your general retail, and when we talk. Highway commercial, we talk motels, big boxes, you know, things like that. So your general retail, you would wanna kind of pull that more back to. Your community commercial, your multi-use into the. Hit my thoughts on that.
But what if there's a guy that's opening up a running shoe store? And he really wants it along the highway? Are we gonna shut him down? Are we, are we gonna force him into community commercial? Would like him to be in community commercial. It would probably be more lucrative in community commercial.
I think the hardest part with it's the, the Department of Transportation only allowing so many exits off the highway.
Well.
So, yeah.
I feel like it's gonna mitigate itself. Because the parcels along the highway are bigger to accommodate the U dot. Um drive access points. Cause I think we can only pull off, I can't remember their stipulations, we can only pull so much off of. A U dot highway like that without D cell and X cell lanes.
And it's a distance too in between each one too.
Right. Um and that would be on the project manager. To figure all that out with U dot directly.
You know what I don't see here as I'm looking is hotels and motels. Where is that?
It's under lodging.
Yeah. You know what, I don't, we'll add that in.
Yeah, hotels and motels.
Okay, I'll put it at the bottom of this. Um we'll also make sure we have those definitions where we want them to be. Cause I know that's caused problems in the past. Okay, glass man.
Can you just clarify on that one, um general retail, will it be in multiple use?
Yes, I put it as permitted in multi-use.
And it's conditional still in highway commercial?
I said permitted.
Permitted.
Okay, glass and glassware. Only in industrial. Golf courses. I don't think we want to soak up our residential zone. With a golf course.
But it is a very trendy thing.
It is.
So I like the conditional use on that one.
Oh, to have your house is backed up to a golf course? But what if the driveway to the golf course was off of little Spanish Valley Main Street? And your house backs it because your community commercial zone backs residential?
It's the same driveway as the grand uses going to the pit.
I mean, it's kind of like a golf course.
It's open space Lloyd.
I mean, I really don't complain about the traffic.
About recreational support on that one.
I don't think it should be in agricultural.
I don't think it should be in highway commercial.
Okay, so get it out highway commercial, community commercial permitted? Residential conditional? It's gonna take up a lot of housing units.
I think.
For nine, number nine green.
I think uh it should be conditional and residential, should not be an ag. And then I would put it in conditional, highway, commercial, community, commercial and multi-use.
So con- conditional for all three of those?
I would.
Any other thoughts? Conditional for recreational support?
Because, because a number one factor for a golf course.
Is water.
Is there available water.
Yep. Okay, so I have conditional for residential, highway, community, multi-use and recreational support.
Well, I'm just gonna argue against highway commercial because if I look at this. Establishments offering goods and services to the traveling public. I just don't see golf courses.
Have you never driven by a golf course and say, I gotta go golf.
You call that a highway?
Pull over.
Pull over, yeah.
So, are you taking it out of ag?
Yeah, I mean, just have you ever seen a golf course along the highway?
Yeah, a lot, there's one on Barley's. There's one in Grand Junction.
Junction.
Mount Carmel Junction and Southern Utah has one. Page, Arizona.
Yep.
Monticello.
Page is on the highway.
Yeah. Well, come on, it seems like a lot of courses, you see them on the highway.
When I'm golfing, if you're driving by, you better be. Yes.
They have big.
Okay, government facilities?
Never.
Industrial only.
Should we permit that in highway commercial?
Sure.
I mean, we're on.
A U dot.
And then how about recreational support? I'm just thinking like National Forest wants an office.
Yeah.
Okay, grain mill. Industrial, should we also allow this in ag?
Ag.
Okay, groceries, supermarkets.
Okay, depending on the scale. So.
This wouldn't be big box.
Residential would be a conditional. You're gonna have some small little grocery stores in residential area and have it as conditional so you can say. Okay, you know, we're, we look at it, it to harmonize, it doesn't need to be a Kroger or a Walmart, so.
So let's revisit this one, we'll break it down.
Okay.
Okay, gyms.
They're overrated.
Ask Andrea.
Should we allow them in highway commercial, permitted use?
Sure, climbing gyms.
How about recreational support? Or do we wanna leave that for the outdoorsy type of stuff, okay? Hardware manufacturing is in industrial? Hay, grains, feeds, bulk fertilizers. We have it in ag, we have it in industrial.
Is that like an IFA or is this a different?
Um it'd be like. Car Hertz and Dove Creek.
IFA.
Yeah, IFA.
IFA. Do we wanna permit it in highway commercial and community commercial?
Yes.
How about community commercial? And a lot of our community commercials, LaSalle, keep that in mind. Okay. Multi-use? No. No, okay. Heating and plumbing equipment? We wanna open that, that's good.
Industrial, yeah.
Home occupation, so let me define home occupation for you. This is cottage industry. There are not people. There's not people coming and going from your house. This is, this is like you're doing your own little thing in your house.
This is not your yoga studio where you have people come and do yoga.
Right. So it's just you. Doing your thing in your off, in your home office. I don't know why this isn't permitted just across the board.
Well, you shouldn't have a home in highway commercial.
Right, so that's a good point Lloyd, we should make it prohibited because there's no homes. Sorry, go ahead.
Drop off your tax, tax data.
You can email it now.
Okay, hospitals, this is a big one, where do we want them? Highway commercial? Ride off the highway, rattlesnake bite, you gotta move fast, community commercial?
I would think so.
Alright, household pets, why is that even on the list?
That's it, does it mean, should it be deleted?
Deleted, I'm getting rid of that, that's dumb.
I think it should be conditional use all the way across.
Cause we do have in our nuisance ordinance, I think it's in the nuisance ordinance, we do have a limit of like you cannot have twelve dogs at your house.
And I don't think you should have one snake.
Okay, junkyards, conditional and industrial. Kettles. So this would be a lot of animals. Permitted in multi-use, I don't know about that. I'm okay with it being permitted in ag. I would be okay with it in highway commercial, community commercial, but maybe not multi-use. Do we wanna make this conditional across the board since it's dealing with life safety issues?
I would not have it at all in multi-use residential or ag. You're conditional use in highway and community commercial.
Okay, so no ag?
The kennels.
You're saying no ag?
I would, I wouldn't have it.
No multi-use?
Cause then you're eating up your farmland for uh kennels. Which is more of a commercial business than it is for agricultural. I know, but but it's a, it's a difference in the use. You're using it as a commercial business to um.
Oh, I see.
Keep, keep animals versus farming.
Right, okay.
And the ag stuff, livestock is gonna fall under a different. Thing. Alright, dry cleaners. Do we wanna make this conditional across the board since we're dealing with chemicals? Or do we wanna just permit it?
I wouldn't think so.
I would think you'd want it in community commercial.
Yes. And highway commercial?
And I don't think it needs to be conditional.
Okay, how about multi-use?
Yeah.
The old dry cleaning facilities used to create a bunch of um hazmat sites.
But they don't no more, because none of the chemicals you buy nowadays um. Uh that's why Utah allows you to use your gray water for um watering your trees. Because all of your detergents and everything that can be sold now has to meet the EPA's requirements.
Yeah, these are just the bigger, big dry cleaning facilities.
Okay, leather, um leather manufacturing, do we want to include that in ag?
No.
Lumber and wood products? I feel like this one's repetitive. Cause we have both lumber, would you scroll down on that Mac for us?
Is that your saddle shop in LaSalle? Your leather?
I would say.
Uh well, I'm, I would call that home occupations. Cause he's not mass producing leather off of the cow. But he's ma, but he's buying the leather likely from somewhere else.
But leather products manufactured.
That's where I was, that's where I was in it, is the saddle shop?
And he is in the highway commercial, no he's not.
No, he's not.
No, he's down, he's on Markle.
He would be in a new community commercial.
Okay.
So do we wanna make it conditional or we wanna make it? I, I still would call that home occupation.
I would, I would call him leather. Yeah, he got a heck of a grant from the county and built in a whole new big building, metal building.
Doing an economic development grants.
Uh huh, yeah.
So do we wanna make it?
I, we're just gonna call him non-conforming and leave that one alone.
Well, your new zoning in there is in the.
It's not non-conforming because it's, he's currently out of. Cause it's currently residential, so we are trying to work with him a lot to get it figured out.
So I would add it to his conditional.
You know, he was on this board for many years, oh Steve, yeah. So he's non-conforming and you gave him money.
That's what.
He's not non-conforming.
Trent just made a really good point. He's got an illegal business and the economic development gave him money for his illegal business.
How does lumber and wood products differ from forest industry?
Yeah, I feel like that should be deleted.
No, that's gonna be like uh wood tables and benches and chairs and.
Cabinet shop.
Cabinet shop, things like that.
Okay, I'm gonna add cabinet, cabinet shop here.
When we've been working with companies to actually build one outside of here for that, there's. Federal grants that go to support that, especially from the sawmills, you can take the sawdust and. Create another manufacturing system off of the sawdust and everything.
Should we permit that in highway and community?
Those are noisy places.
I know. Shay used to have one.
But they're not running all night.
Shay wants one permitted in his garage.
Yeah, can we do that?
I mean, with the community commercial, like there are, in our nuisance ordinance, there are. You know, close it down, turn off the loudspeakers, times.
Yeah. Yeah, when I had a shop, we had to.
So if we had a cabinet shop in community commercial, they'd uphold that like, I can't remember what it was, ten or midnight rule.
Working at home during the day, don't wanna listen to the saw.
Okay, meat, meat manufacturing.
I'm surprised you can hear it.
For industrial?
Yeah.
Mining. Conditional, I don't know why it says that in multi-use. Uh should we make it conditional in industrial? Or do we wanna leave it as permitted? Conditional, crossboard? Mining processing, I think we should clump those together, wherever there's mining, there should be mining processing.
Mining processing is absolutely different.
Well, it is absolutely different. But. Wherever we have, I think we should have that be conditional both in ag and industrial.
On the processing?
Yeah.
No. I think we need to keep the, so the processing because.
Just in industrial?
Yes, because the processing is where it gets dangerous. The mining it and hauling it is kinda here, the processing is where you get up here. All the different chemicals they use.
Is right now. Yes, think about.
Yes, absolutely. Look at the one down at the Colorado River. That's, your tax dollars will be moving for the next fifteen years.
Can't wait.
At once.
Yep.
Okay, mobile home sells. This would be. Is this your, what's the, what's the big company I'm thinking of?
What?
Canyon Country.
Canyon, Canyon Country.
This is fifth wheels. Well, are, so let's define that, like are we talking about modular homes? Or are we talking about fifth wheels?
No, modular homes. So that actually needs to. Mo- mobile home sells, that is an old, old word.
I'm gonna change it to modular, manufacturer.
Manufactured because there's still two different ones, you have your HUD and your IRCs. They're both manufactured homes. And that, they both need to fall within the same thing there, cause mobile home is just a really, really old word.
Okay. Um.
Williams.
Where do we want them? Highway commercial permitted?
Absolutely.
How about community commercial, do I reserve that space for coffee shop?
Yeah.
Multi-use. I feel like we shouldn't have them there, how about industrial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the, the mobile home sells?
Do not?
Yes, no, cause it's just sells. But we do, we do want the ability to have.
I'm just thinking they're gonna have a big huge yard with a bunch of things and I can see that next to the gravel pit. I'm just thinking they're gonna have a big huge yard with bunch of things and I can see that next to the gravel pit.
Those are kinda going away. They're they're getting to where you have one or two model homes. Um, the big ones like Clayton Homes and them, they have uh they're older ones. They keep a lot of HUDs in. They can be set up, moved out quick. Where a lot of your modulators that everybody's moving to, the IRCs, because you can't get loans on HUDs right now. Cause banking, the banks aren't allowing it. But um you're gonna see maybe one or two units. And usually the the like the sales office is one of the units, so. Um, I think you're gonna see that more. I I do think we need to make sure we do have a line item in there for uh manufactured home.
Manufacturing. Manufactured homes manufacturing?
Manufactured homes. Because that is coming. Which that falls under the same category. And and that can't just be in an industrial, I mean.
Maybe we'll do that industrial and highway commu- commercial?
I don't know.
Okay, motor vehicle sells. An auto zone.
Sales manufacturing?
I think that's a typo. Motor vehicle and automotive equipment sells.
So it's an industrial and and uh.
I think we should make it in highway commercial.
If you get rid of the manufacturing.
That was typo, I think. How about community commercial? Your little local Ford dealer that can custom order a truck for you down on Spanish Valley Main Street. One day, one day it'll be there.
Maybe a conditional use because you can limit how many vehicles they could have on there.
I'm like, we got the maps in ten places right now. Maybe. Here you go, Ann. Let's do, just pull that draft zoning map up. The second tab. Just so that we've got a visual and if you'll scroll up to the page two. Nope, up. Right there. You know, this Spanish Valley, this is where a lot of development is happening. We'll get into the nitty gritty of it soon. I know, we gotta hustle.
Based based on the ordinances and the things that we're changing in here, that zoning's gotta change.
So this is the new zoning map.
You guys haven't seen this at all yet. This isn't even what Scott had.
And and is this coming from staff recommending?
Yeah, we just put together with our consultant consultants, we can bring in online too once we get to the maps, but.
Because I mean, it's good to see this map, you know, as we're talking about what you're gonna put in community commercial, or not community commercial, multiple use. Like all of this stuff, we're.
Well, remember, a lot of that pink right there is gonna go away because we have no jurisdiction. A lot of that is.
The pink. No, I mean the pink. I can, yeah, I totally get this map, but um.
So instead of getting too caught up in the map right now, Ann, I want you to think about the level, the tiers. Of dropping down from highway commercial and industrial to dropping down to community commercial, dropping down to like multi-use.
Is there a community commercial on this map? Where is that?
Oh, it's in, it's in LaSalle. Our community commercial hopes are in the Sitla parcel, which is just the big orange chunk. So that's why included, if you go one more page down, Mac. This master plan includes community commercial space.
Yeah, but this is also not accurate. This is outdated too.
We just got it from Sitla.
Well, they didn't get PC zone approval for that area, that parcel south of Ken's Lake. That's their vision, but they didn't get, they didn't, it didn't get approved for.
Here is everything that's been approved, let me see.
So that's why they're just blanked out orange. Where it gets. So and you'll notice it's hard to see on the screen, it's better in a printed version. There's actually a hatch on that lower section. Of Sitla right there. There's actually a hatch line there of this is not included in the planned development.
Right, and so that other map with your stars and. That was um not. Maybe in the future they'll come back to finish.
Well, we have more details.
This is what your community. Your community commercial looks like. Highway commercial, community commercial.
So I wanna get through this list. Sit down Lloyd. We're so close. We're so close. Feel free to walk around, but let's get through this and then we can look at the maps. But but as we're, we might shift the maps a lot, maybe a little, maybe a lot. But I want you to think of that tiered system, highway industrial, dropping down to community commercial, dropping down to multi-use, dropping down to residential. That's, think of it in that categories versus getting caught up on the map right now. Okay, moving on. Quickly, movie theaters. Moving on. Permitted? Highway commercial permitted? Recreational support, no, outdoors. Okay, auto cells. I'm gonna say. Yeah, I'm gonna say automotive equipment cells versus automobile cells.
Equipment manufacturing. So the the one above that, the cells goes away. The one above movie theater?
I think it should just be automotive equipment cells like NAPA and Autozone. Yeah, cross out motor vehicle and cross out manufacturing, just automotive equipment cells. So now we're looking at automobile cells, Ford, Honda. Do we want to allow that in community commercial? Do we wanna allow in multi-use? I would say no. So highway commercial, community commercial?
And then maybe conditional use in. So PPC, yeah.
Same with boats. Should we just mimic that?
I think so.
Okay, nurseries and greenhouses.
I almost want conditional use on residential.
I would be okay with that. You got your little neighborhood nursery.
I don't see that in highway commercial.
Get it out of highway commercial and just do community commercial? Permitted? Multi-use permitted?
Well, why why not, why limit it? Cause maybe that's the only business that wants to use the space.
I just see this a lot slower with the fruit stand.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's all these other businesses, they may not come along, but maybe the nursery will. And they want that spot, so. I mean, just because it's not part of the formula, we tend to see if it's the market, if we're following the market, letting the market dictate. Give it the option, right?
But we gotta remember that on all of these.
Office space. Should we permit it in highway commercial? Or do we not want it in highway commercial, we only want it in community commercial?
Kinda like it as it is.
Paper and related products manufacturing. Should we permit it in highway commercial?
That should be the same as uh kennels, right?
This should be the same as um.
Oh, I see what it is, so if we're allowing, if we're permitting kennels in multiple use, then we should permit pet stores in multiple.
They're diff- I think they're way different. A pet store is going in for a goldfish versus a kennel's thirty dogs in a fenced in spot.
And multiple use doesn't, those aren't compatible with all the other uses that we've allowed in multiple use?
No, 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 I like having pet store in multiple use, but I don't think kennel should be in multiple.
Okay, so we're taking kennels out of.
Okay, power generation, we don't have a whole lot of control over that. That's a legal state of Utah thing. Printing and publishing. There's not that many printing and publishing places left. Private educational facilities. Not in residential.
If it was a public one, I would say it should be conditional, but not a private.
Highway commercial and community commercial, do we wanna open it up?
Okay, so what did we do with childcare like?
Childcare, we said conditional and residential.
So if, so to me, if you have like a pre-kindergarten, right, that's sort of a childcare.
I would put that under childcare though versus private ed facility would be like the guy up here.
You know, your big money private schools, you're you're commercializing it in a residential zone. Where, yeah, where you've got a public school in a residential zone, like I think it's great. Because that's where your tax dollars go and it and it stays right there. Where a private one, the guy in New York owns a private school in your neighborhood.
No, but like Mac just said a Montessori school. You know, that would be a private educational facility.
What if we opened it up in community commercial and multi-use?
Would be charter schools under that category?
Yeah, it depends on their funding, but some are.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna put it in residential as conditional use, make it nonprofit.
Do we wanna break that down?
Well, so so the next one is private nonprofit institutions.
Conditional and residential. Do we wanna also allow it in community commercial?
We lost our screens.
Hold on, I'll shake it. Come back. Okay, private parks. I'm not really sure what that means. I'm like, so not just your backyard.
Area be a thief fall under a private park?
No, that's more of a recreational.
That's the pri- yeah.
Let's not get hung up on it, I'll check it out and we'll get it next time. Okay, private recreational camps. This would be your wedding venues in the in the woods.
Um, it should not be an agricultural.
Well, think of LaSalle, a lot of.
I thought we were gonna talk about camps as a separate.
Yeah, let's put that one on hold too until we can figure out what to do with breaking down camps.
There's also resort, does that go under camps or does that go under lodging?
I think we need to define like at what point does it kick into a resort? Okay, private stables. I don't know why that's in multi-use, that seems weird. I think that should just be ag.
Well, I don't know. I mean, what what are we? It's like right now we have, if you have one acre, you can have one horse, well, you're gonna have a stable. I mean, and that's in residential.
So if I have twenty acres residential.
You have twenty horses.
I can have twenty horses.
It's not permissible in your, on your property because you can't have the stables and.
Trying to keep greenbelt.
I can see this for commercial use though, and maybe that's the definition. Like if you're, if I have a horse barn and a horse in my one acre in residential, that's fine. But as soon as I kick it up to I got fifty horses. That I'm boarding for other people.
And you're in a business.
Then you're in a business zone.
Then you better make them conditional use.
Do you wanna make it? So conditional in ag.
It should be permitted in ag. It was conditional in residential.
Recreational support. Okay, instrument manufacturing, industrial, I think we're good there. Public educational facilities. Again, there might be some Utah laws with this.
Let's not put them on the highway though if we can keep them doing it.
So no highway?
LaSalle's on the highway.
Oh, that's true.
Non-conforming news. We'll look at that. Okay, public parks, I feel like should just be permitted anywhere. Public stables, should we just match the private stables?
Yeah, I keep them at a residential.
You know, I'm just gonna delete that one and we're gonna put all of that in with the other one.
On the stables?
Public stables, riding academy, commercial horse stalls and similar facilities.
And add it to the other one?
Cause we said that the other one's for commercial use, not just your.
Well, no, because if you've got, if you've got one horse, I mean, that's why we were saying in residential, you'd make it conditional. This one, you don't want a any, you don't want it permissible in residential. You agree with that one, Mac?
Cause this is like the arena.
Where the other one, you might have a stable in your residential area.
So let me, so let's say arena.
Well, it's public.
And commercial. Okay, I'll figure that one out. I get where we're going. I'll just think Spanish Valley Arena. So we want it in permissible in ag?
It needs to be conditional because it's a, it becomes a commercial building.
But we have it permitted in ag.
I guess.
Highway commercial? Permitted?
It's probably not gonna be much of an issue in San Juan County. Probably not much pushback. I guess that's the thing, is just what. Whatever you allow in ag, is it going to permanently damage it so it cannot be used as ag land? And is it gonna take up so much space like an equestrian center would?
Okay, how about uh community commercial? You've got your fairgrounds downtown.
Yeah, that's, this would be a community thing.
Okay, and recreational support permitted? Public, let me look into that next one. Public uses such as dams, reservoirs, et cetera. Let me do some research on that. Publicly owned transfer stations.
That's true.
I'm trying to think what land is available outside of towns and most of it is ag. And right now, it's not permitted there.
Yeah, but if you're gonna put in a transfer station or something like that.
Highway commercial?
Well, so the one, so the one.
Like bluff would be in an ag zone.
Yeah, so.
And the one in Mexican Hat would be in an ag zone.
Well, that's not recreation.
Well, get it out of the multi.
And that's the thing is it's not highly commercial, you don't wanna take that up with a transfer station, so you like. Head down the road, take a left, head down the dirt road.
That, that's the bad thing about La Salle is you've got your school, you've got your transfer station, you've got your only grocery store.
La Salle's not a prime example of how to do it, right?
Yeah, we've gotta quit, yes, the representative for La Salle's not even here, so.
Thomas's excuse to set up funeral.
Or keep going through these, you.
Mac, we're so almost done and then I'm gonna give him three minutes to go pee and then we're back to it. I told you I'd drive you home tonight. Okay, renewable energy, I think there's some things with state code there, so let us get back to you on that. Residential units above the first floor. I think we need to cross off um. Owner occupied long-term rental or short-term rental and address that elsewhere in the ordinance, not in this chart.
Yeah, because.
Please.
I look over and he just gives me the. So, so just taking, crossing off that last part, residential units above the first floor. And we will address short-term, et cetera, in the ordinance of that.
Does this affect the business part?
I feel like this should maybe be. I feel like this should maybe be conditional across the board. Where you got your shop downstairs.
If you took short-term rental out of there.
No, I did.
Permissible in highway commercial, that, this is. Yeah, highway commercial.
Including recreational support, you got your backpacker's gear shop below and you live upstairs? Okay, restaurants. We'll get back to it, we're gonna break it down.
Take it out of ag.
Yeah, take it out of ag.
Okay, retail fuel cells, gas stations.
But you might have to live at your stable.
Should we permit that long highway?
Yes.
Yes.
Should we permit in community commercial? Should we take it out of multi-use?
Retail fuel cells and associated things, no.
Little, little community gas station down the street? Okay, for multi-use? Okay, uh, should we allow it in industrial?
Sure.
And how about recreational support? Got a lot of people out there. Alright, rubber manufacturing. Oh, glad we got that one covered around here. RV parks, we'll figure out later when we break that down. Sexually oriented businesses.
Do that industrial?
That's, that's absurd.
And that's how you get Beck Street.
Well, it used to be on State Street, right?
But it used to be. Was industrial only and so. Farmington, Utah, same thing as we put these in industrial. You have to allow for the use, you cannot disallow for it, and so it used to get in somewhere.
That was on the record.
So permitted in recreational support. Now, there are also, keeping in mind, there are also in the ordinance, certain stipulations from state code for sexually oriented businesses, like. I can't remember what it is, a thousand feet from a school and blah, 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 from a church.
Bars, bars are the same way. State, state, uh, state says there's a certain distance for a bar, um, to the school, to churches.
There's that extra layer, if we do open this up, there's that extra layer of like, hey, you're too close to the school. It is mixed use. You can live upstairs. Door number four.
That's short-term rentals upstairs.
Hey, short-term rentals might be permitted in multi-use.
Oh, dear lord.
I mean. You didn't say, you didn't say in the. I mean, do you want to open it up anymore or should we leave it in industrial?
Let, let's just, yeah, let's move on.
No, I think it should be opened up. I think it, it needs to be in at least one other spot.
Conditional?
Oh, imagine the conditions you could put on.
In highway commercial?
Yeah, do that.
Short-term rentals. Um, so this, this one, maybe we wanna hit next time, uh, after you can see the ordinance.
One hundred percent.
And I don't even know that this chart accurately reflects what has been going on.
I mean, we've got short-term rentals in agricultural, conditional in highway, commercial, permissible.
I wouldn't even look at it, I don't think this is updated with what's been, the conversations that's been happening. And there's been a lot of conversations. Okay, signs permitted across the board as long as they. Stay in line with whatever chapter seventeen says. Stock ponds. I don't know, multi-use, huh? Should we just have those in ag? Storage yards. Now, in Spanish Valley, the one thing we're seeing as far as storage yards, this would be like your boats, your RVs.
But not the storage sheds.
Not sheds, it's just a.
Well, we had it, we, we were talking about storage sheds elsewhere.
Now, would uh. Take, take it out of ag on the storage yards. Cause if they wanna do a commercial business like that, they need to change your zoning.
Should we allow it in highway? How about community? Community, keep a bit, keep in mind like ice cream, coffee shop for community like, that's the harmony we're going for.
So we need.
How about just highway commercial?
So we have enclosed, we have enclosed storage.
That's like your unit, a row of units.
This is more like an open storage.
Yeah.
How about?
How does it really differ?
Well, one's built and one is literally just a gravel pad.
The market, how does it really differ?
I kinda feel like highway and industrial would be appropriate.
And I would make it both conditional on the storage yard.
Why? Devil's advocate.
Um, because the.
How many?
They don't become junkyards. That, that, that's a number one thing is just saying, hey, you know, that, this, we're okay with, you know, if we've got boats and campers and this and this. But all of a sudden, you've got thirty wrecked cars being dragged in there and piled up, I mean, now it becomes a junkyard.
Okay, telecommunications manufacturing. That's not towers, it's just the manufacturing. Temporary buildings used for construction work, I think this should be uh, conditional across the board.
Including residential?
Or the guy, you know, building his house and he's in the driveway.
Stating as camper or whatever.
Okay, temporary use of an RV, we're gonna come back to this one. There's a lot of discussion about. Just so you get, know what's on the horizon, there's been a lot of discussion about how to, there's a ton of people living in RVs. That's the housing that's available. Um, and so we're trying to figure out how to do that. Cause we don't want it turning into RV slum. Um, but we need to open up that opportunity for people to have a livelihood out of an RV. Somehow. Okay, textile mill. Industrial.
Like it.
Same thing with that other RV. We'll revisit it later. Uh, critical infrastructure materials, I don't even know what that, we'll pull up that code and I'll have it for you next time.
That is your, the granite jaws.
Or gravel pits.
Yeah, it's places that maintain your roads.
That's, that's the materials that, that is the ones that we cannot change their zoning.
It's there. Okay, water storage.
Should be permissible everywhere, if you can get water, it should be permissible anywhere and everywhere.
I'm gonna put on here rainwater collection.
Okay, that's different.
Is it?
Yes. Uh, there's actually, there's actually, uh, look at.
No, there's laws.
You can't do it.
You can't.
I know, well, that was, didn't they change it? I thought that they changed it, cause I remember Salt Lake back in architecture school, we all wanted to do rain gutter collectors and they said absolutely not.
Yeah, they've changed the law a couple times, same with the uh, gray waters.
So when you say water storage, you're talking about an, a buried cistern that people are hauling water to?
No, waters, water storage, I, I guess we should.
This, I mean, this isn't residential, like residential use, I don't think should be on this list, this is like.
Uh, for water storage? I think you should. You've got doomsdayers.
No, 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 but I'm just saying like, why, why would we care? We're not gonna know if somebody has a cistern in their backyard.
So you're saying get rid of the whole line?
Yeah, I just think we should get rid of this line item.
Well, maybe, maybe it's something that will come up in the future in the next twenty years and it's like. Well, no, just the fact of, hey, so I can't find where, if I can have a water tank on my property or whatever. So, ju- you can't tell me if it's permissible because it's not in the listing.
Any use is not listed, it's not allowed.
Exactly. So make sure it's listed, so it's allowed.
Okay, gotcha. Wholesale retail products. Highway commercial, yes. Community commercial? Multi-use. I don't feel like it belongs to multi-use.
What is your image of multi-use? Because the definition is very vague, varying and mixed uses.
I, I see it as like, it's where residential meets commercial. So it's your apartment building next to the guy running the auto body shop, yeah, it's your residential.
We've got nightly rentals in uh, multi-use?
So you wouldn't like your Costco or Sam's Club?
Right, so that needs to keep, stay out in the two Cs. So you got a PP on the two Cs, nothing else, right?
Yeah, well, and industrial. Unless you don't want it, industrial, highway.
Aren't we trying to save the industrial for manufacturing?
Yes, but I also don't wanna shut down any oppor- any economic opportunity that wants to come to.
But we don't have a lot of industrial.
We don't, so it's whoever beats into the punch. Whether we get Costco or whether we get a tar plant. Whoever buys first. Okay, let's take a break. Yeah, we're gonna do maps, so just take like a five-minuter, grab some candy, thanks for being troopers.
Lloyd's headed outside.
He's like, I'm out of here. I warned you, I warned you, I was like, it's getting gritty. I thought that was helpful. I'm freezing in here.
Um, it is chilly.
My office is like a hundred degrees.
Hey, if you're going to your office.
Oh, you're right here.
I can't find mine.
Oh, you can't find mine? You had one job to do.
I know.
You don't even need a break, just keep going.
That's it.
Two weeks. Hanging in there.
I'll bet.
You know, the fact that we're making so much progress is.
I'm, I'm grateful.
We're getting there.
Trent?
Yes, sir.
What's going on?
It's good. Yep.
Is it your knee replacement?
Uh-huh, I've been good.
It's getting good, seems like we're walking without any.
Yeah. Still, you know, when I sit for too long, sitting is not my friend. But it's, you know, every day getting better.
I'll go get some more water.
So Melissa, how long have you lived in Bluff?
Four years.
Four?
Four. Four years.
What brought you to Bluff? I can't remember.
I hate that job.
That's right, you told me that before, okay.
And where were you before that?
Santa Fe. And there was a preschool next to my house. And I'm a sex therapist, so many things. It's like, come on, guys, get it out of industrial. I was thinking.
I was thinking. Well, some, it means somebody could come after me back in the day, saying she's a sexually oriented business leader in the industrial.
Those, I think it's mostly the visual things that are.
Yeah, but you never know, somebody could, some. You know, I, they might put me next to the taxi.
Well, that'd make it easier to go see, I, I just got her under the taxi driver's.
Right, nobody would wonder why your car was parked there. And I just have to check regularly.
Go weekly to look at that buck.
You go weekly to look at that buck.
Yeah, you're a rarity, I've never heard, usually it's like I just put a car out there.
No, I, but you know, I'm, I'm all for bringing it in, bring it in. People go there.
Yeah.
Spanish Fort Main Street has a place, it's called Dirty Joes. And it's, it's, um, you can't tell that it's. You know, a sexually oriented type business as you drive by, it's very. Like the dressing on the front, it, it doesn't look anything like that. There, there was always a lot of jokes about that place and. What was on the outside, what was on the inside, and then there's a parking area behind.
Dirty chose?
Oh my goodness gracious.
I know, there's a lot.
Yeah, I am so glad we did that, I found that very helpful, I found that really helpful. It would have been nice to have the definitions while, next to us while we were looking at it.
I was thinking too.
But, because then we could have talked about the definitions.
Yeah, at the same time.
But boy, that was really helpful.
We're actually probably gonna do this reverse order. Cause. Spanish Valley we could get hung up on forever. So I, I, well, we look at the other places first that are maybe simpler.
Are, are these in the same order in our packs? Packets?
Do you wanna drive here on this one, cause we've got people on Google.
What do we look at, let's look at LaSalle, then Mexican Hat and those other areas. And then we'll end with.
Well, these ones will be easy to touch on too.
Yeah.
Okay, so go to that one?
So we're gonna look at LaSalle first.
Oh, it's too bad.
I bought some Japanese desserts, if anybody would like to try them. Did you smuggle those back in? Um, no. Isn't it technically smuggling if you bring food across?
I don't think, we don't have LaSalle in our, we don't have LaSalle in our packet. We don't have it in our packets.
You should.
I don't have it in my, which one?
It should be right, what is that? That didn't print right.
So maybe.
They didn't print right. No, see, you only got the one little corner of the map.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, so.
I didn't either.
You didn't either?
Sorry, it only, it must've, it scaled it weird, so you only got the corner of the map.
Okay.
Hey now.
No, we really don't. And that would just. Get you, that would, that twelve million would give us two of our obligations to set up.
I love these things.
And if we can take that and replenish.
Thank you very much.
Maybe Mark will give us four shares, I don't know. That Sibley will allow us to use, if they do not use.
Cheers. Okay, let's jump into these. Um, I'm sorry, in your packet I sent you, it only, it scaled it wrong and it only printed the bottom corner instead of a. Twenty-four by thirty-six, so if you wanna like walk and talk on this one, that's fine. You can walk and talk, I don't care what you. I'll be a. Weather woman over here for a quick sec. Wait, so this is LaSalle?
Tell me to run this one?
Sure. Oh, no, cause I'm gonna.
This is LaSalle, um, Lloyd, you did bring up a, a valid point, so the yellow is your residential. Um, there is already quite a few homegrown type businesses along Merkel Street. Um, right now, they're just in violation, so we're trying to. Figure out how to do it. So East Merkel, from basically town edge to town edge, we wanted to make community commercial. Um, and then have your residential in the back. Highway commercial on here, there's hardly any development yet along there, but we're thinking of keeping this area up here. Your historic downtown, right, so keep that slower paced. Your new, that's community commercial. And that, so right now, you've got the little grocer, emphasis on little, the school. Um, there's a repair shop. There's, there's just little things, there's a feedlot somewhere right there. And they're in the middle of community commercial, that would be non-conforming at this point. Um, but keeping this kind of historic downtown LaSalle versus your new big gas station down here. Um, keep in mind this. This hatched area is federal land. And so that's gonna be going away, it's gonna be going away. So the rest of this would be multi-use.
So question on this stretch here. So, Firehouse Road. Um, is the firehouse right here in this?
Yes.
And then we have the church.
The church is right there in the middle.
Is here, we have a graveyard. Is it there? Um, why wouldn't we just continue this up? We've got a campground.
The castle is right here.
Or at least like a multiple use maybe.
Well, that's kinda what.
Should we do community commercial, all the way to highway commercial?
I would.
I, I would, I would get rid of this residential strip in between, even though there's a lot of connecting roads.
Yeah, cause you don't wanna go commercial, residential. Yeah.
So they're talking about changing this part to community commercial as well?
Oh, this yellow. Oh, above. I mean, you do have big, like this big chunk is San Juan County land. Maybe I shouldn't say that on public record, it needs to be noticed.
We'll push that residential.
Uh, yeah, the condemned area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I wonder if you, do we.
Is that on the tax sale coming up?
It was.
Well, would, would all the stuff on Merkel fall within the multi-use?
Multi-use.
Hmm, yeah.
Well, if it does, then let's, let's do that, let's.
And just dissolve community commercial?
Mm-hmm, get rid of the community commercial there, go from your highway commercial down and make it multi-use.
All multi-use to the residential.
Instead of adding another little commercial layer down there, cause you've already got the one in the historical area. Then you got your highway commercial and then, then from there down, make it.
Let's look at our chart, I mean, does everything we allowed in multi-use?
It begs the question of why even have community commercials?
Cause this is our main spot for community commercial.
This is really kind of the only one.
So if we dissolved that into multi-use, it would.
So we just take that roll out?
So you. You would go all the way, uh, multi-use down to Fox, through Fox Lane?
Yeah, so this would all be purple.
See now.
And that's what they've done in Spanish Valley.
I disagree with getting rid of the, uh, community.
I like community commercial.
Because Spanish Valley Drive.
Cause you need the main street.
Needs to be that community commercial, not just, not just in LaSalle, but that's a great place for it.
What if we made the whole bit community commercial? And then your multi-use.
That opens up a lot more in that area.
Cause we already have multi-use all over, I kinda like doing that. Any other comments?
Do we carve this piece out for just residential and on here? Cause this is mainly homes, single family homes through here.
Up here, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, that, that's, that was my thought too.
I, that's why I was thinking the multi-use would work better, because you do have a lot of residential in this area. There's not so much through here.
We wanna make this community commercial and drag multi-use over. Cause this has, these parcels are bigger where they have more opportunity for commercial development.
Right, so.
Selling farm equipment.
Where is the county's piece? Like here? Oh, it's that big one on that end, okay, and that was a tax repo.
Yeah, that's the.
So if we did, we could drag multi-use in back here and then community commercial, all that.
I, I just wanna speak up for the yellow right now between the highway and the community commercial.
Single family homes.
That sing, I think you need to protect your residential. I, you know, I think you need to protect those, should we, should we leave this residential pocket?
I got it.
Yeah, you do?
Oh, no, sorry.
You can't drive that far, yeah, get us out of here.
Just click back, yeah.
I mean, there, so, one of the biggest things on everyone's radar across the nation is housing. And you have a bunch of big lots here that if we did leave it zoned as residential, it kind of forces. Development towards housing.
Well, given that everything outside is the multiple use, the multi-use. Yeah, I would keep, I protect your neighborhoods.
But why protect the neighborhood?
Just cause there's no housing.
Uh, I guess my question is anybody getting down zoned in this scenario?
Well, that's what they were talking about.
No.
They would be getting up, upzoned in the hierarchy of things. More is allowed, but less sanctity of residential.
And so. Sanctity of residential, thank you.
But the, but the buffering is highway commercial, commu- um, multiple use, community commercial, residential, in my understanding, that.
As we have it, what could happen is Love's Truck Stop backed up to your backyard.
Right, so you wanna put in some.
Love's Truck Stop.
Multiple use, you wanna do commercial.
Grocery store on the other side.
Yes.
And then a border.
You wouldn't wanna be sandwiched is, is what we have.
Right, so.
So what you're saying?
It needs a commer- a multiple use.
So we have an inlet and an inlet, you want, this residential backed up to commercial. Here, because that's pretty existing.
What if we pull this back? What if we pull the community commercial back, because this is all residential right now?
No, we've got, we've got two campgrounds in here.
Not legal ones?
Yes, we do, we approved, we approved this one. I think it's right there, it's like the fourth or fifth lot over, it's a really nice campground.
Hold on, hold on, I know there's, are you think, I'll trust you. Like, I'm pretty sure there's.
The one we just approved.
There's one here.
There, there's two on Merkel. There's one here and then there's one down. But, my, my thoughts are, is if you, maybe in this one. Then you can do what you were talking, here in your community commercial.
Commercial here and then multi-use here.
And then you could do your multi-use just down from Merkel down where you have this line drawn. To pick up the ones that are kinda non-conforming or illegal use. And then, and it can just come across when it hits this section, because you got, um, your.
The next one.
What would be the harm in making this whole block the community commercial? Cause we've already got a couple RV parks, there's. Eight.
Is, is residential, is residential permissible in community commercial?
That was my concern, as I thought of these often.
I do not wanna turn these people into non-conforming use, but, cause we've done that enough to our county.
Yeah.
So if, if, if residential is a permissible use, I'm with you on that. But I do not wanna take residential away from these guys.
That's my deal, something to happen there. And so.
We would focus housing.
Open that up.
One thing, one thing we could do.
Any community commercial we talked about, like the apartment complex.
Get rid of this highway commercial right here.
And make it community commercial? And just wrap it?
Be, and, and for the simple fact that there again, even though it was highway commercial and it has been since nineteen seventy-eight. We've allowed that housing to go in there through the years, now we don't wanna make these folks non-conforming.
So we need it here, but we need.
You guys agree with that? And now, no, not highway commercial. No. Community cur- commercial allows housing. That's all I wanna make sure of.
Okay, I'll double check. Good. Anything else for LaSalle? We're just a first run.
Do we have Old Town on here?
Yeah, it's right here.
So LaSalle wraps around this band.
Yep, it's up on top.
So we've taken that and just made the, the, I think is the multi-use.
On all of it?
All of it, so we've gotten rid of.
All the highway.
And this is common throughout, we have gotten rid of highway commercial. And clustered highway commercial only in the community areas.
Cause what we had is this snake of highway commercial throughout the whole county.
The whole town?
And it just didn't make sense in places that are more majestic, to be like, oh yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, your highway commercials now just within your main.
Cause Old LaSalle would be a hard one, cause you do have, you have, which we used to have LaSalle.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you've got the fire station was the first one in there. And, but then it's residential all the way through, resort, RVs, so I think.
And then it's still permissible, you know, within those areas, makes it easier to manage. But then you cluster, you know, your gas stations and everything back in your highway commercial instead of just allowing them.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Mexican Hat. Um, it's a weird mashup between tourism and industry down there, like industrial industry. Um, so we've got like a bunch of gravel pits, oil workings in this industrial zone. There's another gravel pit and stuff up here, so that's why it's multi-use. This is a primitive camp. Um, and then this down here, we blocked out as the recreational support, so things like hotels, motels. Gas stations, restaurants.
And that's all they have, they don't, they.
It's already all there.
Along the highway, it's just that residential, all that.
And remember that all this is federal land. So it will just be uncharted at this.
Whose district is this?
And what's the, what's the gray one?
Industrial.
That's industrial.
So there's a, there's a gravel pit right here right now.
So we have to keep that zoning.
Especially gravel pits are protected. So there's not a lot to do with that one. Unless we wanna make it.
Oh, that's right, let's put a sex business there.
There we go. Intercreational.
I mean, unless we wanna make it like highway commercial, but I think the intent is to try to preserve. The feeling of Mexican Hat, the recreational support.
See, and I don't know enough about it to even tell you.
You haven't been down there late on a Friday night?
No, no, I was.
Mexican Hat?
I was looking for that. What, what'd you call it?
You haven't been down there late on a Friday night?
No, no, I was.
Mexican Hat?
I was looking for that. What, what'd you call it? Never could find it.
Why are gravel pits on this? Alright, so here's for a canyon.
Pits are protected by state.
And again, this is a little bit misleading with what we've shown. The only thing that's private is right here and right here, that's a sitla chunk.
And the air, the airstrip is on?
The airstrip's on.
Oh, it is.
So all this hatch, we have no control over. So that's why I'm like, we gotta fix this because it looks like, oh yeah, here's this and here's that, but actually we don't have anything out there.
We just have that little square.
So we have this little square, that's the old trading post slash uranium mining camp. Um.
Restaurant motel.
Used to, um, there's some, I think they're running into some problems that, it seems like things have slowed with that development, but it's still on.
Yeah, yeah, they say they're, they're working.
Why is it yellow?
It's not, it's green. So this is a recreational support.
Okay, okay.
So you could have your horse stables out here and do horse recreations out back or whatever. Um, you know, this is kind of a, an interesting point if something were to happen out there for development, cause the canyon's right here.
So that's kind of the shape, that's what drove the shape here is the contours of the land really don't allow for development outside of this area. So they follow the cliffs adjacent to this so that. So you're not seeing kind of a square zone, you're seeing contours of the land.
So yeah, I mean. If this sitla actually came up for grabs, it's like, well, that's what you can develop out of that junk.
This is bright, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any comments on that one? Recreational support. Um, these other four are gonna be super quick. Uh, I don't even know where we have this one if we.
So this is a, across from.
This is high.
Yeah.
So that's high crossing and that's the.
Is that high or?
Yeah, that's high.
That's the.
Yes, sorry.
That's to the gas station?
Is anything open still?
There's no gas station.
No. Everything's closed enough.
NPS even posed their.
Lloyd, yeah, stay light. Did you just get off a meeting?
Yeah, I've been working through that proposal with Jesse and Martin. And it's pretty dang good.
Good. I'm still looking in this planning commission. I think we should really get a bail here pretty quick.
How's it going?
That we don't really have a whole block.
I think they're trying to take all the zoning for the federal.
Um, it's just an existence of recreational support.
Right.
Um, this is Halls Crossing. Um, and on your way to Halls Crossing, this is Cal Black Airport.
Yep.
Um, there is a little sitla chunk next to the airport, so that could be developed. Um, you know, this is at the whim of whatever the feds want to do. So.
We have no say in any of that.
Might just dissolve.
When you looked at the Berzerds Land Exchange where we were trying to exchange sitla lands for BLM lands. There, there was an attempt to get more sitla land here to develop a resort out here.
So that one might be down the road where somebody wants to put in a resort up there. Um, you know, it needs a lot of infrastructure, so that's kind of.
Where, whereabouts is that on that, on the other map?
It's down the road, it's down the, it's basically in between, almost middle from Halls Crossing and the turnoff.
Okay.
So you turn off ninety-five to head to Halls Crossing, it's kind of.
Where is it in relation to like the, the Department of Transportation is a gravel pit there on the right, much further south?
Huh, so.
It's after that turnoff, there's this big.
There's that, you know where I'm talking about.
See, you gotta turn off.
So you're driving back down that highway and then you hit over here is about Cal Black and then you make the bend and there's the old gravel pit?
It's, it's out across the flats.
Yeah, the flats has that gravel pit on the right.
Yeah.
Are they still talking about?
I guess I'm just so excited that I'm at the lake, I'm not looking at gravel pits.
You're thinking of tomorrow.
Okay, so real quick, actually, it's.
He becomes governor.
Oh, oh, that's a filthy, okay. Cause I.
We have a.
Cody.
It really would, Cody and TC.
Okay, let's just take a quick peek at Spanish Valley, which is our main one, and maybe you guys could dive into this a little bit more on your own and.
Oh, we don't have time for that.
Zoom in.
Huh?
So we can, so we can talk about Spanish Valley.
No, because that's in town block.
After.
Okay, but nothing anywhere around there, okay.
Nope.
Yeah, cause this is a big one.
It's huge. It's huge.
I see a lot of mistakes on this one.
So, yeah, this is definitely gonna be our biggest.
So we can take it.
Whatever.
So we can, so you've got Craig online already, so he's ready.
Okay, cool.
To present, so we could.
So take a look at this.
The recording and because we've gotta go to the public meeting.
I, I got you, I got you, boss, I'm picking up when you're putting down.
As long as you get it.
Okay, let's go. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
We never, we never.
We never started, okay. Okay, I'm gonna stop this one.
That's gonna get serious.
Yeah, actually has to sit down for this meeting.
Okay.
Trading, I guess.
Hey guys, stop this one.
This one has shown her online behind the scenes.
Oh, and we gotta help. Hey, can we start recording?
Did you guys see the picture of Gents? It's his great, great, great grandfather.
Wow, upper left?
Yep.
I can see the resemblance from here.
Hey, you're doing great. Go eat your food.
And his name's Gents.
His name is Gents, dude. You could've stopped talking a while ago. I got that, I'm picking up when you're putting down.
Hey Craig, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure. If you hear everything right.
Does anybody else in the booth?
Okay, let's just a second here where we make this.
For years.
I'm just sad he's not here. Hope the page numbers are the same. I wanna go to.
He should be here.
Me and you gotta quit spending so much time getting.
Speaking of, you weren't even working the other day when I was up there.
I hiked from you. You're starting to talk to me like my wife, so, I lied.
She knows things.
She was walking out of the Budweiser warehouse Saturday and Lloyd goes, where are you going? And she turned, was she mad?
No.
Oh, man. It doesn't matter to you, just kept walking.
That's normal, it's every day.
Hi Craig, how are you? Do you want us to do an entire screen?
We actually covered quite a bit.
Alright, do you wanna call us to order when we figure out the rest of it?
Okay. Alrighty, let's call to order. The San Juan County Planning Commission meeting for May the ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Those in attendance. Are commissioners, Ann Austin, Shay Walker. Lloyd Wilson, Melissa Riggs. Staff. Kristen Bushnell, Mac McDonald. And Gents Nielsen. Anybody else online?
Yes, Trent Schaefer.
Oh, Trent Schaefer. Spelled S-C-H-A-E-F-F-B-O-R.
I got it, I already fixed it, I already fixed it, don't even say it.
Did you see that?
No.
That's how my old boss used to write it, know how I feel about that.
Oh, the principal.
I can't say, go ahead.
Okay. Um. Shall we have the pledge of allegiance?
You bet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would hope that nobody has a conflict of interest.
This is the cleanest agenda we've ever had.
I know, I like it. Anybody? Conflict? Nope. Okay, approval of the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes.
Did she spell your name wrong?
I spelled it wrong a lot, but I've already fixed it, it's already. I got a late night text.
What is that, Schaefer? Schaefer?
Anybody? I will entertain a motion.
A move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, we got him.
I'll second.
And Shay seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Public comment. This is for anything. That is not on the agenda.
It's a quiet audience tonight.
Have we got any public?
No.
This is our president.
We do not.
Okay. Alrighty. Mister Craig Call. You know, you've been doing this for a long time.
Yes.
I remember you when I was with the city of Monticello.
Hmm.
Yeah, Craig, we'll, we'll just turn the time over to you, you can share your screen or do what you need to do.
Okay.
I'll stop presenting here.
I guess I don't know which icon involves sharing the screen.
It's.
I'm not familiar with Google Meet.
There's a little box with an arrow pointed up at the bottom.
Yes.
And if you click that, you can just say entire screen and it will share what you see.
But it doesn't share the screen I want to share.
Um, you can also say window.
I was looking for that button last night.
Say window?
Yeah, and then you should have different options on there.
I'm sorry, you mean give it a voice command?
Not say window, click on the tab that says window, or the word that says window.
You might wanna show them your screen.
Yeah, like, let me show you my screen. So it's right here. Can you see that icon, okay? And then you click on that.
I'm sorry, I brought up a menu asking me which of my screens I wanted to share and I don't see the one I.
So if you, if you move over um on the tabs, you have Chrome tab, or you have window, or you have entire screen.
Okay, we're airborne.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, so you can see this and my face, right?
Yes, looking good.
What could be better? Okay, thank you. So, um, my understanding is we wanna just talk generally about the basic concepts that involve planning and zoning law. With the understanding that um. We're, we wanna have any kind of discussion about any one of these topics you are welcome, you would like to have. Please just pipe up and we can uh. We can cover the things that are most relevant to you, so. First of all, let me thank the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman. They provide modest compensation to the Utah Land use Institute for the time it takes to prepare and present. So we appreciate them. And then these are other sponsors that we work with, um, the League of Cities and Towns, the planners, the realtors, the home builders, and the real property section of the bar. So we uh, we try to make sure that we are um operating in a way that these guys can all feel good about. And it's kind of a diverse group, if you'd agree there. Um, we'll be quoting a lot from this book, which I understand many of you have copies of or maybe have read. If you don't, let me know, uh, we can arrange for that as well. So. Um, when San Juan County was first settled, there were not that many people. This is probably what it might have been like when Adam and Eve were first around. But over time, a few people join and come and then more people come and then more people come. And finally, we need some kind of government to organize things. So we, in Utah, this is a representative government, the county. Voters of the county select a county commission, of course, and the county commission of coins and planning commission. And so this is representative democracy, everybody gets a chance to. Select the leaders and then the leaders select others, but it all goes back to the voters, which of course is the way it ought to be. This is an idea of a city council, it's not a three-man commission, a three-person commission, excuse me, like San Juan County has. But the idea is that they meet and they regulate the issues of the county and there's hardly any controversy, especially when there's. Planning and zoning issues, they all say yes and life moves on. Except when all those people show up and then sometimes it gets a little more complicated. So the, the question is, what are the limits on local discretion? Basically, they're, they are significant, the Bill of Rights limits us. The federal statutes. You're very familiar with this in San Juan County because it's a, a lot of federal land. There are state statutes, in fact, the Land Use Code at the state, that the state legislature enacts. Is the, is the main framework that all local planning and zoning operates with. We have case law from the courts that interpret the statutes and the case law of prior courts. Then we have the, our ordinances, the ones that you helped create, we are still bound by them even though we helped create them.
Hey Craig.
Rules and regulations, yes.
Sorry to interrupt real quick, I'm not sure that your slides are moving forward for us.
Well, I'm putting a new piece of, a new word on each, on this uh. In this right side of this slide, instead of changing this line?
Yeah, we're just seeing the, the Utah land use law cover.
Seriously?
But, um, yeah, if you click slideshow and then from beginning.
I did that.
Oh.
Darn it.
Or we, we could also do it in PowerPoint, if you wanted, we could just minimize the ribbon there. So in the upper right corner, there's that little arrow under, kind of under the share button, if you minimize that. And then click the X under it.
Interesting.
Yeah, if you go under share with your cursor, there's that little up arrow in the gray box.
That's what I did to get the uh. So do you see the PowerPoint, um?
Right now we see agenda.
Nineteen.
Interesting. That's crazy.
Have him click on that from beginning and see if it'll pull it together on there.
I think he did that and it's in a different window. Max says to double-click on from beginning. Sorry, the beauties of technology.
I can't go to my PowerPoint right now. That's interesting, I'm gonna stop sharing and try it again. So I don't see the up arrow anymore. No, the file's too big to email.
Or if you just, I, I think we can make it work if you share your screen again.
I, I'm sorry, the arrow that you had me click to share my screen is not visible anymore on the command bar. Okay, I'm getting there.
Sorry for the hiccup.
Just hope it works this time. Oh, look at that.
I have.
The mirrors.
Yeah, if you go back to the PowerPoint, maybe we'll just run it through the, the PowerPoint, just don't start the slideshow. I think that's where it got messed up.
So the problem is when I'm screen sharing that screen, I can't go back to another screen. So I can go to that PowerPoint.
Yeah, go, go back to the PowerPoint, we were, we were close. If you go back into your PowerPoint and share that. Yeah. Just, yeah, just give us that. So I think Craig, if you just open up PowerPoint from your desktop there.
Okay.
We could probably. Cause you've got PowerPoint open, right?
Yeah, there it is. I can see it.
Okay, and then if you click that little share button.
Okay, when the PowerPoint's open, I can't see the share button. But I'll, let me minimize the screen and see what I get.
And I, I think if you, when you do, perfect, we got it.
Okay.
So if you go over to where it says always use subtitles and click that X. And then just above that is a little arrow, that little up arrow. Right above the X you just closed.
Here?
Uh, one more little arrow up. Right?
You can see my cursor, I don't see an arrow.
Just a little bit over to the right. Nope, not that one. It's right above the right there, yes. Perfect. So let's just go from there, I think it got messed up when you started the slideshow, so we'll just have to um, kind of keep an eye, you can even pull that. Well, that works, let's just go with that.
Okay, you can see that?
Yep, perfect.
Gosh, so first I'll take a class on PowerPoint and then you can take a class online.
No, it's, it's worse, the struggle is real always.
That's crazy. It also doesn't allow me to advance with an arrow, but, okay, anyway. This is when I was talking about how the county grows. And this is the uh, local government that when they do land use, of course, everyone agrees until the public shows up and then we have split votes. So basically, as I mentioned, these are the limits on local government. The Bill of Rights, federal statutes, state statutes, case law, local ordinances, which we of course enact at the local level. And codes and regulations, some of those we create and some of those are imposed on us, like the building code and the fire code. And sometimes they're mixed. So what we, what I would talk about generally if we had three hours was the difference between an administrative and a legislative decision. And we will get into that because it's absolutely fundamental to understanding how land use works. And then we'd get into specific issues like conditional uses and non-conforming uh, uses and uh, development exactions, but let's just talk about the things that um, seem of most important here after we get through this administrative legislative discussion. So the first thing is that there's a number, there's at least four categories of players in the planning and zoning business. We've always had property owners who needed permission to do something, at least as soon as we created rules that uh, require permission. It, it isn't something that's new, um. I served with Provo City for a while as an elected official and I went back and looked at the first ordinance that was passed in Provo in eighteen forty-nine. It was a land use ordinance, it required everyone to fence in their livestock. And so, you, you, very early, there was a consensus that although nobody likes a lot of regulations, we still need some. So over time, the citizen planners at the top of this chart have made significant decisions over time to um, decide what is important enough to regulate and what we just let people do as they wish. And that's usually worked fine over the decades that we've been in a, in the state of Utah. And before that, the territory, basically if the local city leaders, the county officials could agree with the property owner, then everything was fine. That's what happened. But lately, we've been involved with disputes involving third parties, neighbors. Um, a recent case decided just the first of this year involved the neighbors near Monticello who didn't want, you know, involved in the power line or the turbines, the wind turbines. Well, that's a third party dispute involving a property owner, in this case the people who run the turbines. And the city, the county, excuse me, that had to manage um, how those turbines were run, the conditional use, the conditions and how they were enforced. So it's these three people involved, a whole lot more than there used to be, the categories of people. In the middle of this, we have Kristen, so she just takes care of all these things and makes it easier for everybody, right?
Sometimes, sometimes harder.
Okay, so legislative decisions are different than administrative. Legislative decisions include creating the general plan, annexing land, writing the zoning ordinance, what colors on the zoning map, sometimes development agreements and approving planned unit developments, if they're fancy, if they're big. Those are all administer, legislative. The county cannot make a legislative act in the land use arena without the planning commission's advice. So that's an old tradition, it goes way back and it's imposed by state law. So the county commission can't do these things knowing that sometimes development agreements and planned unit developments are not legislative acts. But to change the map or the ordinance to annex land or to amend the general plan, the uh, the planning commission must review and give an opinion. And these legislative acts are different than administrative acts. Administrative acts are subdivision approvals, are approving a conditional use, or approving a site plan or a building permit. Whoever you appoint as your appeal authority during the uh, Northern Monticello case that was before the Supreme Court, the county commission itself was the appeal authority. But that is, it's usually not common to have an elected body be the appeal authority. I serve as the appeal authority for Grand County, for example, so it can be a person or it could be a board of adjustment. But, but these decisions are administrative, even if they're done by the county commission. So just because the county commission has the final say in a subdivision approval, for example, that doesn't make it a legislative act, it still is administrative. Why does that make a difference? Well, it has to do in, with how you survive a challenge to a local decision. The standard in the law is a decision can be overturned if it's arbitrary, capricious or illegal. Well, what does that mean for a legislative act? This is the standard, if an ordinance could promote the general welfare, or even if it's reasonably debatable, that it's in the interest of the general welfare, we will uphold it. So the county commission has to really goof up to have a legislative decision successfully challenged in the court. The courts do not want to be, they don't want to do your job, they don't want to be the planning commission. So most of the time, when the issue is a zone change or the text to the zoning ordinance, annexation, the general plan, the courts are not going to overturn local decisions. And that happens time after time after time. It's hard to, well, let me tell you quickly of a case. This is uh, Draper. Actually, where it says Draper up here, that's Sandy. Draper is down here below one hundred and fourteenth South. And uh, this pre, piece of property right in the center where the brown spot is, is a vacant piece of land. Harmon's grocery store bought this land and tore down the houses that are shown in this aerial view. In the general plan, it's shown that this is going to be master planned separately. And basically what this means is, the intent is that it be commercial. So this is the property. And behind it, you see, there are some newer homes. Very nice newer homes. Well, Harmon's wants to build a grocery store. And right up the street in Sandy is this Harmon's grocery store and that looks very nice, doesn't it? It's very, you know, that's what the front of a Harmon's grocery store looks like. Do you know what the back of a Harmon's grocery store looks like? Not this nice. Well, guess which side is going to face the neighbors? So these nice neighbors in this new property are, are just not amused by the idea that the city is going to consider putting in grocery stores delivery area, trash collection and compaction right at their back fence line. So they complain. And the city council denies Harmon's rezon, so Harmon's can't build the grocery store. Now, the staff recommended approval, the planning commission recommended approval. But in this case, it's the city council's decision and they decided not to allow it. So Harmon's sued. And it went to the Court of Appeals and they said basically, we um, we've met all the criteria in the ordinances, we did a general plan or we did a site plan. We did a feasibility study, we showed the drainage study, here's an architectural drawing. Here's, and here's a financial analysis that shows that the great sucking sound that you'll hear when we open will be sales tax dollars coming to Draper from Sandy. There is no reason to turn this down. And the Court of Appeals said this. We know of no case in Utah or any other jurisdiction on the grounds that a zoning change was denied should be overturned because it was stupid. Now, that's not the court's language. What they said is, it's reasonably debatable that this is in the public interest. Yeah, you know, it's just not compatible with the neighborhood and basically, we know your general plan says that you're supposed to allow commercial in this zone, but that doesn't mean you have to allow the first project appeals that applies. I mean, basically, it's up to you to decide what's compatible and what's not, you, the city council are in charge. So Harmon's lost. This is a picture of a sign in that same lot showing that a grocery store is going to be built. And this is the grocery store. So what happened? Well, what happened was Harmon changed the orientation of the store. It now faces north instead of east, it doesn't face against those neighbors. And along the back of those neighbors' fans, there's a row of single story shops. I don't think they even have back doors. And they have a buffer area that's landscaped and, I mean, it's so beautiful that I think if it were in Elko, it would be a national park. Basically, it's, they, they did what they needed to do to make it reasonably um, debatable that it was in the interest of the general welfare to approve it. And then the city council in its discretion said yes. And there was an election between the two votes, if the city council changed, if, if Harmon's decided to spend his money on election campaigns instead of public relations, all they had to do was buy, you know, excuse me, I didn't mean that word. All they had to do was get four friends on the council, there's seven members. And so they could invest in political campaigns. But anyway, the store's there, it's doing very well and the neighbors aren't as unhappy as they would have been. So that's a legislative act, it's up to the local discretion. We're gonna skip forward a few slides here, cause I just want to hit the high points. So this is a, a Home Depot grocery store. It's in Summit County, right outside of Park City. It looks different than the one I'm used to going to in Ogden. And the reason is that there are design standards in Summit County that Ogden doesn't impose. These are legislative decisions to impose design standards, it's administrative to administer the standards. But to write the ordinance is legislative, and as long as it, as it advances the general welfare, as long as it's debatable, then very significant rules can be imposed. In fact, in Ogden, I used to operate out at my law office was in a historic building. And we got a postcard from the Ogden City authorities and it said, by the way, spring is coming. We just want to let you know you're in a historic building. And what that means is that if you want to change your building or remodel it, you need to go through the landmarks commission. And then it said, even if you paint your building, and even if you paint it the same color. Really? It's all legislative, if they want to create that kind of a rule, it's within their legislative discretion to do that. This is a piece of land in uh, Summit County. The zoning here is one house for forty acres. So this says development approval. But the only thing the person who buys this fifty-seven acres is entitled to is to ask for a zone change. Right now, they get one house. So as it happens, the Summit County Commission and the planning commission were were fine with there being some uh, development here and so it did occur, this is now part of the little town of Hideout. But basically, the legis, the planning commission recommends, the elected legislative body decides, that's legislative discretion. And it's very difficult to challenge a legislative act. Any question about that? Okay, the, the one thing about a legislative act is if the citizens want to disagree, they can go to a referendum. And that's not too tough to do in an area with a small population. They would typically have to get like twenty percent, and I don't know the exact number, it's in the book if you have a copy. But you might need to get twenty percent. You might need to get the signatures from registered voters equal to twenty percent of the number of people who voted in the last presidential election in the county. So if they were ten thousand votes, they'd get two thousand signatures and all of a sudden the issue's now before the public in the ballot box. But that's the only check on legislative acts, the only practical check, as long as those acts are not illegal, that is, they don't contradict the Bill of Rights, federal statute, state statute, case law, or the rules and regulations. Question about that? Okay, back to our chart. So legislative acts, very, a lot of discretion. An administrative act, however, is a whole different story. And that is the um, by the way, one, one of the best examples I've got of this is the Northern Monticello Alliance case that, that came down in January. And we can talk about that if it's of any interest, but the uh, what the, uh, what the court outlined there, once again, this reinforced some of the, the importance of the record when an administrative decision is made. So what administrative discretion is, an administrative land use decision will be upheld if it's supported by substantial evidence in the record and is otherwise legal. This applies to the county commission or the planning commission, or whoever makes the land use decision. So, for example, in Salt Lake City, the staff makes subdivision approval. It doesn't even have to go to this planning, planning commission in every case. In some areas, the planning commission is the final say. In fact, that's what the legislature enacted two or three years ago, that the planning commission has the final say, or has the immediate, has the final say on preliminary plat, and that the legislative body, that is, the city council or the county commission, can't make the final decision on a subdivision. So what does that mean then, when we talk about, um, this standard of substantial evidence in the record? The land use authority, that is, whoever's making this administrative decision, must determine whether legally and factually the application complies with the ordinances. If it does approve the application, if it does not deny it, in either case, explain why on the record. So this is, this is an area where it's difficult for local officials to to really understand how all this works in the real world. If someone comes in and applies for a use that everybody wishes was not allowed in the code, it's too late to change the code. And they have to be approved if they comply with the ordinances. So in a subdivision application or a conditional use application, a non-conforming use, or even a variance, if the applicant can show that it conforms with the ordinances, and there's no evidence, substantial evidence to the contrary, then the land use authority, whether it's the planning commission or the county commission, must approve the application. Let's talk about this with a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit shall be approved if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. And the idea here is that when you do a conditional use, there are standards in the ordinance. So this is the question a person goes through to decide whether to approve a conditional use. One, what are the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of this use? Two, can those negative effects be reasonably mitigated? Three, if so, then what reasonable conditions does the ordinance allow to be imposed? So the, this is pretty straightforward. But it can be, uh, it can be, it's certainly something the public might not understand when the process is being heard by a public body. So let me tell you another story. This is Wadsworth versus West Jordan. And West Jordan has an industrial park on the west side of town. Um, and they, at the time that our saga unfolds, they had been really lucky to get Danan Yogurt to build a manufacturing facility there. It's like five acres of ground and half of it's grass. I mean, it's, it's really an attractive location. And the city is very fond of Danan. Let me show you how fond. This is the street sign. Where Danan is, there is prosperity. It's really, they really like Danan Yogurt. Well, right next to Danan Yogurt is a construction yard. Danan's starting here over here on the right. And then you've got this construction yard, and it's outdoor storage. So when you're looking at toward the west, the Ocre Mountains, and you're looking over this construction yard, the presentation of Danan's campus is compromised by the clutter. And so there's, the thing is, there's a lot of land around here. This is, this is Danan Yogurt. This is the construction yard in the center of the photo. And there's all this land around there. Well, Wadsworth Construction wants to build another construction yard. And Danan says, over our collective dead bodies, I mean, we are not interested in this. If the city approves this, you can expect our relationship to curdle. The standard is this. Substantial evidence means evidence that's beyond a scintilla, and a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. So the decision as to whether or not Danan, or excuse me, Wadsworth's application complies with the ordinance must be based on evidence. That's not public clamor. That's not emotion. That's evidence. So substantial evidence is relevant, independent, and expert, or otherwise credible. Someone who knows what they're talking about, who has some background, is explaining this in a way that a court could count on it in making a legal decision. And if it's just, if it's just emotion and concern about, um, negative effects that we really are afraid might happen but don't know much about, then that's not evidence. So what happens here is the planning commission recommends approval. The planning, it's appealed. And in this case, the appeal is to the city council in South Jordan. Again, I'm not a fan of having the elected officials act in a judicial role to review decisions, but that's what it was. The city council turns it down, which is a little hard for the court to understand after it goes to the Court of Appeals. Because the court is looking at this, and they're saying, okay, this is what the city said it was relying on when, when the decision was made to, uh, to turn this down. They said outdoor storage is not conducive to the area. Uh, Danan has a beautiful campus, and outdoor, outdoor storage would detract from it. Um, outdoor storage might have rodents or dust. And outdoor storage is just generally not consistent with our desire of what we want the industrial park to be. So the court looks at that and says, the problem we have here is you, the city, put in the ordinance that outdoor storage is allowed in this zone. If you didn't think it was compatible, why did you allow it in the zone? We are, have to assume that with all the discretion the city has, you wouldn't specifically on the face of the ordinance permit something that is, that basically isn't consistent, that isn't, you know, your desire. In fact, if we, the courts, are going to uphold the ordinances you write, if you want us to enforce them, then we have to pretty much conclude that if you put it in the ordinance, even as a conditional use, it's desirable there if the negative aspects of the use can be conditioned. So then the court goes and says, okay, we looked at the criteria you're supposed to use. For example, it says you don't have to approve it if you, um, if you deem it, the use is a nuisance. And yet, the only evidence in the record is the concern expressed by neighboring landowners. So nobody, Wadsworth is a big operation. Somebody could have gone to Wadsworth Construction Yard in another community or some other part of this one and looked and determined that there were rodents, or vermin, or dust, or other issues. But nobody did that. The only issue, the only basis for the denial was the concerns expressed by neighboring landowners. And the court basically said, that's not enough. You've got to show by evidence in the record. In other words, if it says, for example, that you don't need to approve the use if you deem it a nuisance, then you have to deem it. Deem it. They, what they said was, if you, if you are requiring findings to show, with evidence to show that you, that you have deemed it, then you, you have to show in the record what that evidence is. Otherwise, we're going to allow the use. So this is the construction yard that was built by Wadsworth in West Jordan on the very place they asked for. This is under construction, but after this photo was taken, I'm sure they build an opaque fence across here. It's a ten or, it's a six or an eight-foot wall. It's going to hide all the, you know, it's doing what it needs to do to mitigate the negative aspects of the use. And it looks like this is gravel. It's not going to be as conducive to dust as if it were just mud or dirt. So good logical conditions imposed, but you couldn't deny it if the zone said, if the zoning ordinance says basically it's allowed.
I have a question about this one.
Sure, go ahead.
So if there had been design standards set, and, um, could that have been, could all of that have been prevented? Wadsworth would have had to meet the design standard in the ordinances. If there had been design standards in the ordinances for that zoning, and Wadsworth met those, um, could all of that have been avoided?
Well, I don't know. It wouldn't have stopped the public clamor. But the problem is that in the conditional use process, you can impose all those conditions. You can even do it without it being in the ordinance, so long as there are some standards in the ordinance. So what they said in the ordinance is, you can deny it if you deem it a nuisance. So what the, um, one of the negative aspects might be the, the opportunity for rats and vermin to occur. If that's the case, then how do we mitigate that? Well, you could surround it with a concrete wall like this. You could oppose certain standards of cleanliness. I mean, rats are not specifically attracted to machinery, I don't think. So you've got to have something else going on. So you would impose reasonable conditions. And, and those conditions would be like the, the design standards that would apply just to this use. They would be logical as long as they legitimately address the negative aspects of the use and mitigate its negatives. In fact, what the legislature did more recently was they changed the wording of the statute to say mitigation is not elimination. You don't have to eliminate the negative aspects of the use. You just have to soften them. You have to, you know, tone it down, but you can't expect them to be eliminated. When the legislative body adopted the concept of allowing construction yards in this zone, they knew what construction yards were like. I mean, they didn't expect them to be as antiseptic as a hospital emergency room. So you can't impose conditions that would make it that antiseptic. It has to be within the range of what normally is considered to be a construction yard, because that's what the legislative body approved.
But you can add design standards as, as, as a condition?
Sure.
Okay.
If they relate to the negative aspects of the use and the ordinance is the, for example, in the, the ordinance is, the ordinance may have standards they're like. Condition can be imposed to eliminate visual clutter, or nuisances, or traffic, or noise. Um, and, uh, you know, if it's an issue visiting hour, hours of use could be restricted. I mean, all those things could be in the ordinance, so that when this conditional use application comes in, the local body imposes reasonable conditions to advance those, those, uh, anticipated negative effects.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. This is Moab. So we have this cul-de-sac, uh, next to the road rock. And where my culture is, where there's a Google Earth arrow, is the McLehaney's house. Now, you'll notice that's at the end of a very long cul-de-sac. This V-shaped cul-de-sac. And I, I don't know how, there could be 25 houses or something along there. Yeah, and so the McLehaney's come in and they say, we want to put in a bed and breakfast here, or a VRBO rental. I know nobody's heard of those in your area. So it's allowed in the, in the Moab ordinance. It says you can have it in this zone. So they, this is the McLehaney's house. They come in and ask for it. And the city council in Moab turns them down. And says, well, we just don't think it's right in this place. We don't think it's, um, that the neighbors like it. And I'm sure that every homeowner in there said, we don't know anybody who comes to this town and rents a VRBO who doesn't get their own a four-reeler. I mean, this is going to be constant ATV traffic in and out and up and down all day long. So the city turned it down. When this went to the appellate courts, the Supreme Court of the State of Utah retained jurisdiction, which is a little, that's a pretty high-powered decision-making body for a conditional use for a bed and breakfast. But the court wanted to make a point and said, it quoted members of the city council in what they said, and the court said, these decisions were made on clam, on clamor, on emotion. There's no evidence in the record as to why this was turned down. So you zoned it for bed and breakfast. Come up with a good reason why whatever's negative about that bed and breakfast can't be mitigated. Otherwise, you have to allow it. And do that based on substantial evidence. So right now, Moab doesn't allow bed and breakfast anywhere in the zones anymore. And so, of course, they have a lot of them that are existing, and some of them that are illegal. I hesitate to guess how many, but it's, uh, this case is the most recent case. It's 2018, saying, you've got to show your work. It's just like your math teacher told you. The city can't be upheld in a court action if it hasn't preserved a record showing findings of fact and conclusions of law that, that they have used to make their decision. And this is a much more, they've elevated this whole issue and made it much more important than it ever was. Any question or comment about that?
They're making the same mistake on Kane Creek right now, too, aren't they?
I'm not familiar with that.
Oh. You will be here soon. You'll be really soon.
Oh, is that in Grand County?
Yeah.
Okay, we can talk about that, that's for sure. So this is what the court said. It's the council's responsibility to define the basis for its decision, not the district court's. Simply stated, if a city council is going to sit it as an adjudicated body, it needs to produce findings of fact capable of review on appeal. Which brings us to this cute little case. This is Davis County v. Clearfield. And those of us who sometimes represent property owners find it particularly sweet when one government entity is suing another one. But this gives them an interesting situation. So Clearfield City is, State Street in Clearfield used to be quite a nice boulevard, you know? And, and back in the turn of the 19th century, 20th century, it was not unusual for people who built fine homes to build them on the busiest street in town. We called it conspicuous consumption. And it wasn't privacy they wanted. It was a recognition of status. So some family with above-normal means built this very nice bungalow on State Street. And not, you know, a little later, but still, um, in the 50s, someone built this, you know, nice, large ranch-style dwelling because it was just the right place for base of family. Well, the good news is, those houses are still there. The bad news is, nobody wants to live there anymore. It's a seven-lane highway. So the county comes along and says, we've got an idea we know everybody will love. Let's use them for alcoholic treatment centers. And the problem is, these residential lots abut other residential lots to the west. And everybody in the, who lives in the area had, well, I'll use a legal term, nuclear hissy fit. The, um, Davis Junior High School, North Davis Junior High School is right across the street. So the county, this county commission, county, uh, health services goes to Clearfield City and says, we'd like a conditional use permit for our group home. And Clearfield City says, we're hold a hearing. And they were sure the police chief was in the room because this was going to be a Donnybrook. They turned it down, and this is what the Court of Appeals said. Indeed, there's almost uniform public clamor when any mental health facility, halfway house, jail, or prison is proposed. The public realizes the need for such facilities, but they should always be located somewhere else. Citizen opposition is a consideration which must be weighed, but cannot be the sole basis for the decision to deny an application. In fact, what they said is, experts can testify. The police, the police chief was in the room, and he said, those facilities, if they're well-controlled, should not impose a criminal those facilities, if they're well-controlled, should not impose a criminal problem. There shouldn't be a problem with increased crime. And yet the county commission on the record, not the county, excuse me, the city council on the record denied the request because of concerns about crime. And there were no, there was no evidence for a concern about crime. There's absolutely no question for apprehension. But citizen clamor that the opinion of the public is not evidence on things they're not skilled in understanding. So a, a person could sit in their front yard and say, I counted 12 cars in the last five minutes. I think I can believe that. They are, they are certainly capable of counting cars. But whether they're capable of determining as a traffic engineer would, when the tipping point is for public safety, then their evidence can't be used to verify there's a public safety problem when one more car is added to the street. It's, uh, it's meant to be an area where there has to be substantial evidence on the record. Any question about that? This is Uinta Mountain Homes versus Duchesne. You can tell from this photo that Google Maps, Google Earth takes pictures in the winter and the summer. But this is, this area was identified as a place for a group home for wayward boys. And, uh, the county commission received, the planning commission approved it, conditional use. The county commission denied it. And the, the county commission basically said, we're denying it because in the hearing, the, the applicant said they couldn't make a profit if they didn't, if they couldn't house 15 boys there. The county commission heard from its experts who said there's not, the facilities on the property are not adequate for 15. We believe they're adequate for 12. And these were health officials. So the planning commission based its decision to approve the use because they had to, but to limit it to 12 boys. And everybody appealed. The neighbors appealed, the applicant appealed because he needed 15. Goes to the county commission. Once again, I don't recommend they be the appeal authority, but the county commission said, you've already told us you can't make money without 15 and we're not allowing 15. So we don't have to approve a top, a topic, a project that's not financially viable, so we're turning you down. That's a bad choice by the county commission. The court said, in your ordinance, you had no criteria for financial viability. There's no provision in the state law or in your ordinances that say only people that are financially viable can make land use applications. So you have to look at the negative aspects of the use. And if the use is, you know, if the use is allowed by the zone and you can, you can mitigate the adverse effects of the use, you have to approve it. And this was particularly sad for the county. The state labor commission got involved. The Fair Housing Act was invoked and, and it turned into a real Donnybrook. Um, so it's a group home and it involves federal law. Another problem was this, two squares on this map show this is the, where the group home was applied for. This is an existing group home the county had approved a few years earlier. And the court saw no distinction between the two approvals, except there were more public clamor down here because there's more people down here. And that again was not a basis for rendering a decision. The county's conditional use denial based on economic viability was invalid because the applicable criteria in the county code did not include a test for economic viability. The county's decision to grant a similar permit in 1997 was used to show the current denial was arbitrary. Public clamor was not a sufficient reason for denial. So to summarize this, basically, an administrative land use decision can only be upheld if it's supported by substantial evidence in the record and is otherwise legal. Any question about that?
I have a question.
Sure.
Since we're in the process of establishing new land use ordinances, you have in your book a statement, like it's in the chapter in the beginning. But it talks about, um, I'm just gonna read this since, because I think it's, it's related. But if there's no ordinance mandating that local land use decisions be consistent with the general plan, there's usually no need to worry about appealing a general plan decision as the general plan is only advisory and not binding, absent an ordinance stating otherwise. So my question for you, Mr. Collins, do you recommend counties have an ordinance that says that as a way to protect them from miss, potential mistakes that they make in the land use ordinance? Or, um, because that's currently what is, I think, being argued in the Grand County. Is because they actually do have an ordinance that says, um, that these zoning decisions have to be in alliance or in accordance with the general plans. So I'm just wondering what you think. Is it advantageous or is it not advantageous? Is it ripe for abuse or, you know? What's your experience say?
Well, I, I can't talk about anything specific in Grand County because I'm a quasi judicial official and can't talk about cases outside of the body, you know, the people that are participating. I think Park City has a requirement like that. It might be Summit County. But you'll, in Draper, they didn't. That's why Harmon, Harmon's grocery store said this is consistent with the general plan. And the court said that doesn't matter. And the state law also says that the general plan is just advisory.
Unless you have an ordinance that says otherwise.
And the, the, I think it complicates things and makes it even harder to get your arms around the issues in a, in a spirited debate. If that's attempted, because the general plan is philosophical in general. Um, and the ordinance is meant to be specific where the rubber hits the road. But the best way to accomplish that is to simply have the, to amend the ordinance so it is consistent with the general plan. The, the general plan, if the general, the, the home builders on the state level would like that to be the rule nationally or statewide.
Would like what to be?
The ordinances must be consistent with the general plan. What, what they're saying is we come into a community and we have this ag land. If the general plan says it's supposed to be eventually housing, then we're entitled to a zone change. You can't turn it down. And so the applicants like the idea of consistency because they can force development where otherwise it might not be allowed. If it's not forced consistency, then the city can still make every zone change on its own merits. So in Draper, they, they said to Harmon, we know our general plan says we're going to go commercial here, but not yet, not this project. And they, Draper would have had a much more difficult challenge doing that. Turning down that Harmon store if they, if they basically said their land use, their legislative land use decisions have to be consistent with the general plan.
Okay, thank you.
So are you, are you, in summary, having that clause in there would add a extra layer of complication and potentially loopholes?
Well, and it, the, the general plan, if the general plan shows development in the area and the ordinance doesn't, then if you make the general plan mandatory, the general plan is, becomes your zoning mandate. And you may not want, if, if you want that, then make a match.
No.
And it's just a simpler process.
Or change the general plan, update the general plan. Um, my second question is about, uh, why do some counties choose to make their conditional use lan, uh, decision, um, making body, the legislative, well, the county commission versus the planning commission?
I think it's, you know, from some experience in this business over my 50-year career. I think it's what I refer to as slippage. Basically, it's you as the legislative body enact these ordinances thinking you know how they're going to be interpreted in a forest. And then you delegate to somebody else and they don't do it the way, there's a slippage. There's a difference between your vision and what the ordinance is supposed to accomplish and what someone else's does. So the only way to counter that and to not be blamed by the electorate for bad decisions by the planning commission is to keep the final decision yourself. And the, it's also not uncommon that the, that even when the planning commission is allowed to make decisions like conditional use permit review, that the county commission retains the ability to be the appeal authority. With the idea that the appeal authority is entitled to just reverse the decision if it wishes, but that's not the case. The, the appeal authority can only reverse if there's not substantial evidence to support the decision. And if the planning commission has substantial evidence to support its decision and it's not otherwise legal, illegal, then the appeal authority has to approve the decision. Whichever way the planning commission went. And so the, certainly for the legislative body to hold the original jurisdiction and appoint someone else to be the appeal authority leaves more control in the, in the legislative body. But for the legislative body to be the appeal authority means that they, they may think they have more power than they do. Does that make some sense?
It does.
So just, just to highlight the, the Monticello Alliance case again. As we're talking local, um, the decision in January was that the, that the record, that when the San Juan County Commission heard the appeal from the owners of the wind turbines, the San Juan County Commission took new evidence and made a decision to leave the conditional use in place. And the Court of Appeals said the county commission could not take new evidence because the evidence is the record of the original decision. And the original decision was by the planning commission. So that's why the matter was remanded back to you to make the decision with substantial evidence. That, that, because in the county, the county had decided that the appeals of land use decision was going to be based on the record. And in this case, the record didn't include the information that the turbine owners wanted in the record. So they gave it to the county commission after the planning commission decision and the court said that was inappropriate.
Um, so I, I think, are you talking? It's the turbine one? Did it get remanded? Oh, it hasn't come to us, okay, yet. But, you know, we have in our, our proposed LMO, a statement about appeals where it says the appeal authority may not remand to the land use authority for a new decision. And so is that, you know, so that kind of contradicts what you just said.
Well, but you're taking one sentence out of the ordinance. Does the ordinance say the appeal authority makes the decision on the record?
Same, the appeal authority may reverse a land use decision, affirm the land use decision, affirm in part and or reverse in part, modify a condition or requirement, attach conditions or requirements, and make any such orders ought to be made consistent with its decision. And then, and then it says the appeal authority may not remand to the land use authority for a new decision.
Great. So that's what we call de novo. So, and they were a little deep in the weeds here, but there are two, under state law, there are two different standards that the appeal authority can be delegated authority under the ordinance. To hold a new hearing and start over, which is what your ordinance provides. And if the ordinance says you can't send it back to the planning commission, there's nothing wrong with that.
Because that's what our new ones is.
Yeah, that's your new one. And the, um, the old ordinance that allowed the county commission, basically according to this court decision, was saying that they had to make the decision on the record. And they, they went beyond the record. They went, they looked at information that was not before the planning commission. And that's where the court found a problem. And then the court remanded everything back. And of course, the planning commission's where the record has to be established under the old ordinance. How that affect, how that's affected by your new ordinance, I don't know, but the new ordinance is cleaner, makes more sense. Certainly better for the county commission. That leaves them fully in charge.
Or the appeal authority.
Yeah, if they're the appeal authority.
They're not the appeal authority.
Well, then the appeal authority is, is basically in charge, de novo. But the appeal authority can only do what the state law allows. They have to find substantial evidence to support the decision.
Okay, sorry to get in the weeds there, but it's a rare opportunity to ask you directly.
So we, we have gone an hour and I'm happy to respond to questions or I can discuss a couple of points, whatever you'd like to do.
I think we've got time to keep going.
Do you guys have time?
I fed them dinner tonight, so they're good to go.
Shoot, I knew I should have driven down there.
It wasn't, I mean, it was okay.
Okay, let's talk about interpreting the ordinance. Um, another place where, I mean, hats off to you guys. You really probably didn't understand what the courts are pounding home at the time they invited you to take it, you know, to enjoy the appointment to the planning commission. This is what the rules are on how we apply the ordinances. A land use authority shall apply the plain language of land use regulations. So for example, in the Wadsworth case, the plain language said outdoor storage is allowed in the zone, period. And then it says, if a land use regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application, the land use authority shall interpret and apply the land use regulation to favor the land use, the land use regulation to favor the application. So when someone comes in for a conditional use, if it's allowed in the zone, then the land use authority shall interpret and apply the land to allow it. Then, and apply the regulation to allow it and to favor it, not just to allow it, but to favor it. The, um, this is a quote from the Supreme Court in another case. "The best evidence of the ordinance's intent is the plain language of the ordinance itself. We presume the city council was deliberate in its choice of words and use each term advisedly and in accordance with this ordinary meeting. Where an ordinance's language is unambiguous and provides a workable result, we need not resort to any other interpretive tools in our analysis hands." So let's say, for example, that an ordinance provided, um, for a conditional use and that when a conditional use application came in, the, uh, a member of the council or the commission that adopted the ordinance says, well, this was our intent. Well, the problem is we only have the words and we only look at the words, not the intent, unless the ordinance is ambiguous. But if it's clear, we assume, as it says here, we presume the city council was deliberate in its choice of words. They also have said before, if, we also assume that the city council that didn't include language intended not to include that language. It was left out on purpose. That's the only way the courts can do this because they can't just go wandering down, wondering what was going through the mind of the legislative body if the ordinance on its face basically says this use is allowed in every part of this zone, for example. Therefore, the court or appeal authority should assume that it's allowed in every part of this zone. And if the negative aspects can be mitigated, then the use has to be allowed. Does that make some sense? The, the critical thing is, in another case, the, the Court of Appeals, and it repeated this language like seven times, it says this, "Because zoning ordinances are in derogation of a common law right to the unrestricted use of property, provisions in the ordinance restricting the use should be strictly construed. And provisions allowing the use should be liberally construed in favor of the property owner." And that's, that's in the And that's, that's in the code, that's in the law. And the, the problem is that while the idea is if it's a close call, the property owner, the applicant wins. And that can be frustrating because in an area with limited resources and you don't have, you know, 16 lawyers who operate in land use law and 23 planners with 20 years of experience, it's a little hard to guess everything that might go wrong when you're drafting an ordinance. And so sometimes we're, we're stuck with wording in the ordinance that we might have made more clear. But once the application is submitted, the ordinance can't be changed. Under Utah law, if an application complies with the provisions of the ordinance that describe what an application is, must include, and the fees are paid, then the ordinance can't, you know, the only question is, does the application comply with the ordinance? Now, there are a couple of narrow exceptions to that. One of them was what we call a pending ordinance. So right now, if you have an ordinance pending that would prohibit a given application, then if that ordinance is pending before the application's filed, you can, if you wish, apply that ordinance against the application for a maximum of six months. And if it's approved, then of course it would be applied permanently. But even while it's being considered, the application could be held up or denied based on the pending ordinance. Question about that?
Yeah, that's relevant to us right now because we in a sense do have pending ordinances that could impact landowners' future use of their land. Is that, are you saying that we might be wise to consider a pause on, on applications?
Like a moratorium?
Yeah.
No, the good news, no, well, it's, it's not a moratorium because it doesn't apply to everybody. The, the question, if somebody comes in with an application that wouldn't be approved under the new ordinance that's being considered, you don't have to approve it.
Okay, so we're already protected.
Yeah, because it's a pending ordinance. A pending ordinance is a better tool than a, a moratorium.
What, what officially triggers it being pending?
Ooh, that's a really good question. So the, the, an ordinance is an ordinance, by the way. It's not a glimmer, it's not a gleam in the planner's eye. That's not an ordinance. It's not a cavalier comment by a member of the planning commission saying, we ought to do this. That's not an ordinance. But if we have a, well, I can tell you what clearly is a pending ordinance. And I'll even tell you a story. So I used to be city attorney for the little town of Providence up in Cache County. And we heard from the grapevine that someone who wanted to put in an adult business, sexually oriented business was looking for land in Cache County because they, they have a great market there with the USU students. At least the, the men, I guess. I don't know. But anyway, we were concerned they might come to Providence because we didn't have any provision in our ordinance that tell, that said where they could be. And every community under the United States Constitution has to allow sexually oriented businesses because it's free speech. But you can limit where they can be. So what we decided to do was to download a copy of Provo's ordinance. Next, we do, we figured Provo would know how to regulate this. So we downloaded Provo's ordinance and put it on the agenda for the planning commission. And thus we had a pending ordinance because it wasn't ordinance, it wasn't adopted, but it was on the agenda for, for consideration. And then we had six months to talk about it. And during that time, we set up some limits saying that it, a sexually oriented business couldn't be within, you know, some hundred feet of a, of a church or a school or another sexually oriented business or something. And basically we limited the places in town where it could be. And we did it with a pending ordinance.
So Craig, legally, could I, can I reference our new ordinance even though it is not legally adopted yet? So when somebody calls me up and says, hey, how about this? Can I reference our new ordinance now that it has gone to planning commission?
If it's formally considered, yes.
Okay, hold on. Let me back up. We just went through the whole love scene. The ordinance that the judge asked us.
I'm not upholding it, Lloyd, don't worry.
No, no, the judge asked us which one it fell with it. Because even though the other one was being made for over a year, it was a pending ordinance, right?
Have you guys seen it? You had seen it?
100%.
So that's where.
Over and over. But the judge asked us, which one did it fall in? Was it the, the one that was existing from 11 or the one that was done in 19? I mean. So, but, but for the judge to request, because it was such a small timeframe, knowing that the landmark design had been working on the ordinance that was in place, for him to request for us to make a decision on which one it was?
He wanted to know, he needed, he needed to make a ruling. In order to make a ruling, whether you did the right one or not, he needed to know which one and why. I think the critical question here is, there's no requirement that you apply any ordinances, that you may apply any. Cause the county.
Exactly right.
They could have a very good reason to let the application come through and then they want to say, we don't want any more loves or we don't want any more.
Well, we're so close now that it would make sense when people call me with questions. That we could say, hey, by the time you actually apply, it's probably going to change.
We have been in the draft, and not only that, until that ordinance is finalized, like we went through today, critiquing things.
Remember, you only have six months anyway, so if you take too long, you're out.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you could completely be interpreting or misquoting something that we haven't fixed yet.
That we haven't legally adopted.
Yes. So to me, I, I would say we would not go to that next step until it's approved by the commissioners. Because.
Cause that was, my understanding was we, unless it is the legal standard document, like up until the day we adopt it.
Yep.
We are operating on the old ordinance.
Right.
No, I can tell people like, we're thinking about doing this or that, but it's not.
Right. And that's where I would be is, you know, this, these are the things that we're looking at changing that we're hoping in the next little while.
Right, that could get us in trouble.
You could, because we're still making decisions and changing things as we go along.
Building the airplane while we're flying it.
Yeah.
What could also get us in trouble is if a bunch of applications come through under our current ordinances that will turn them into non-conforming when we pass a new one.
Why? We did that to all of us in 19.
Well, I'm just saying, like, it, it, it's, it's a concern or a question I have and I don't know if staff would know better because y'all would have to deal with that.
I, I think the direction that we're heading with our ordinance maps now is opening things way up.
Upzoning rather than downzoning.
Yeah, and so I, I haven't come across an application here recently that would shut down their idea.
Well, cause the main thing for me would be if you're gonna take people, if you're gonna put people in residential that weren't previously, that takes away their opportunity to have a short-term rental and they're gonna want to do it ASAP.
Yeah, we, it seems like we're bringing things up more. And so there hasn't been that harm caused.
Right, so maybe it's not a worry.
In gen, like generally speaking.
Okay, but there's, there's a couple of nuances here. Let me just pull up the exact language. We skipped over it earlier because I didn't want to get to, I didn't know how relevant it was. So an applicant is entitled to approve of a land use application if the ordinance conforms to the requirements of the applicable land use regulations, land use decisions and development standards in effect when the application applicant submits a complete application and pays application fees, unless the land use authority on the record finds that a compelling countervening public interest would be jeopardized by approving the application and specifies the compelling countervailing public interest in writing. What this means is, uh, for example, up in Morgan County, they had landslides and houses were moving. I mean, they didn't have wheels. They were moving. And the, everything was moving but the mortgage. The mortgage stayed right up there on the side. But the, um, Morgan County, if someone came in on a lot right next door to a house that had slid off, the county could stop it on this basis. It's a compelling countervailing public interest. So it's not common, but let's say the floodplain changes or earthquakes occur or land is, you know, there's something very significant that would justify timeout. So the other exception is the one we're talking about. In the manner provided by local ordinance and before the applicant submits the application, the municipality formally initiates proceedings to amend the municipality's land use regulations in a manner that would prohibit approval of the application as submitted. Now notice this only works one way. It doesn't say in a manner that would approve the application as submitted. So if the application's prohibited, a pending ordinance isn't going to allow it. But if the capital, application is allowed, then a pending ordinance might prohibit it. But only if it's a municipal, the county's option to do it. And like you say, if you want the rule to change when the county commission votes and it's over, that's how it is. It's up to the land use authority whether they want to choose this option. But it, it is for a period of no more than six months. So if you talked about it for four months, you can't enforce it again. Yeah. So it, it means six months from the date that it was first considered, not the date of the application.
Right.
Does that make some sense?
Yep.
So if you wanted to talk some more, I could talk about non-conforming uses for a minute.
I think that would be helpful, Craig, because we're dealing with a bunch of them right now.
Okay.
We currently have a bunch of non-conforming or just straight up in violation uses. But one of our big tasks with this new ordinance is how to get previous non-conforming into a conforming permitted status and not pinging changes that are going to be non-conforming too hard in the future.
I see. Okay. Well, so let's talk about that briefly. A non-conforming use was once legal or it wasn't illegal when it was started. But it is not legal under the current ordinance. But it's been maintained continuously since it became non-conforming without a year of abandonment. So that's basically the law. And it, 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 there is another provision that I don't have a slide for because again, it's a little off into the, um, details. Local government can amortize non-conforming uses. Now, the reason we don't do this is be, don't know much about it is because it's rarely done. It's complicated and it's emotional. People are saying, well, you can't, I've been doing this forever. The most emotional part of it is when it was never legal in the first place, but they've been doing it for 20 years.
That's exactly what we have right now.
Yeah, well, the property owner has no viable option there. It's completely a matter of the local government being willing to bite the bullet and, and challenge the use. Salt Lake City, um, basically was worried about non-conforming rentals and that sort of thing. Duplexes, you know, basement apartments. And so they sent notices to everybody and said, if you have a use, if you have a second unit on your property, basically this is way back before the current rules about accessory dwelling units. But they said, come in and get a license. And if you don't come in and get a license by this date, then we will consider it illegal. So what they did is regulate them instead of eliminate them. And then over time, they can eliminate them.
We have potentially maybe kinda considered going that route with short-term rentals. Um, I don't know if that's opening up a can of worms or not, or how we want to deal with that because we have so many illegal ones.
Well.
We, we want to try to get them back into an original, the original intent of the zone or the new, I should say the new intent of the zone. But we have hu, literally hundreds that we're trying to figure out what to do with.
Yeah, we, I was at a meeting in Monticello a year and a half ago with Envision Utah and we came and sat down and chatted and I had no idea. They said there were 270. It'll be in.
As a county, I think we're up to 460.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I had no idea. Well, so this is what Provo did and the Utah Supreme Court supported it. Provo said, we are amortizing your use. And basically what it was worried about was student housing. I mean, throughout the town, way back in the 50s, when BYU started its explosive growth because the GIs were coming back from the war and, and the university was booming. Ernest Wilkinson, who was the president of BYU at the time, begged people in Provo to take in students because they couldn't build housing fast enough. So over time, it got to be more and more of a hassle. In fact, they were really very nice residential neighborhoods where one neighbor would rent the basement to six single men. And it caused all kinds of disruption. So Provo zoned them out, made them all non-conforming. And then required registration and said, by the way, your use has five years and then you must terminate it. And if you don't think that's fair, let us know and we'll do a, an analysis about your, of your use and we will determine, um, what would be a reasonable time for you to recover the investment you made in the, in your use. And the Utah Supreme Court upheld that. So I mean, there were people in California who bought a house and their kids just lived there and they, they have so many kids that there was always one of the kids living in the house. And Provo said, well, you can't have student rentals if one of them doesn't own the house. And so that didn't solve the problem. But eventually the court said Provo could notify every one of them that they had to come into conformance with the local definition of family, which was no more than four unrelated people living in residence. So they could go down to four, but they couldn't, um, they couldn't have six or eight or 12. And the court upheld that and that's, over time, those uses have been amortized.
I disagree with that.
Well, only because you have 20 of them.
Just the, the daylight thing.
Isn't it just sunset?
I'm not telling you what's right or fair. I'm telling you what's.
Well, it's a very complex issue that's on the horizon here.
Well, potentially another option, I'm wondering if any other community has thought about this though, is if you've got so many non-conforming, maybe you just get rid of that zone.
Reset.
That's, that's why a lot of Spanish valleys go into multi-use and community commercial.
Well, and that's so, when we look at that map, what's the purpose of even having residential then?
Because we still want to uphold a very sacred space for long-term housing options.
But those aren't even, they, they are, they are.
We have none left that are private.
Not, not in the areas now, but SITLA.
Right.
Most of theirs. So the hard part is forcing developers to want to go that way. Doing housing is not lucrative.
Right.
Then you have the petition by the 20 residents that live there long-term. They're telling the county that you need to stop allowing for these overnight rentals.
Well.
So you got 20 citizens that live right there impacted. So the county, you need to fix us.
A lot of our neighborhoods are pretty, it's a pretty 50/50 split on long-term residents and overnight rentals. And so.
If we're not going to do a comprehensive plan for Spanish Valley, then the residents potentially would benefit by an upzone and change, just get rid of residential.
That's what we've done.
And let them be all, not, not, not on the east side of Spanish Valley, not in the Coronado and, um, that zone, it's still yellow. um, that zone, it's still yellow.
So what, well, you look at, yeah, like valley estates and that coming in. So it's not built out yet. What, what we envisioned was anything east of the road would be residential because by then you're getting kinda too far off.
Oh, Spanish Valley Drive.
Yeah.
Not really. It begs to be, I mean, the Spanish Valley Drive is gonna be busy, like that seven or eight lane road that Craig was just talking about. Where you're not gonna want houses along there and all, all ready, you doing community or multiple use on the west side of Spanish Valley, you might as well do it on the east side and let those property owners, the handful of those twenty, you know, of them decide, maybe they, you know, if they're not gonna get re, if the county doesn't have an appetite for shutting down those resident, those illegal rentals, then it stands to reason that those property owners get to get, um, the highest and best use of their land.
But this goes back to what Craig's talking about right now. Like we want it to go back to residential.
But who's we?
We're trying.
How many landowners are we really talking about here?
At least twenty.
Yeah.
With their signature. It's, it's one thing, it's one thing that was a historical neighborhood.
Out of two hundred and ninety-something ERUs.
Well, I bet if you asked those twenty, if, if, if the option was to upzone them to multiple use, what they would say.
Well, you look at that one gal that came in here that's got nightly rentals all around her.
Yes.
Non-conforming and she is residential and she asks for a zone changes, like we can't.
Yeah.
You're stuck as an SVR.
But I think we have to look, I mean, we're looking very short-term. We need to look long-term, long-term. And it's gonna take some time to get that back to residential.
And I think Mac said it right, is the nightly rental, um, will level itself out. I mean, the market will.
Mac and I have had lots, lots of discussions.
Yeah, oh, there's already a decline. There's a decline right now.
Those guys who are, let's go, let's go, let's go. That's quiet. Curtis Wells, let's go, I gotta have this. And then he's like, well, maybe I'll just do the first phase first and so.
So talking to the, the big guy on that project, they're gonna hold up for two more years because it has fell, it has fell on the cells.
Well, I just sort of wanna say, you keep using the term upzone and if I had a house and I lived in my neighborhood my entire life, I don't think of it as an upzone. I think of it as an attack on my residence. So I really don't like that term.
Um, well, if, you know, there's, there, there's the abstract just talking about it, but if you actually look at the map, if you, if you actually look at those rooftops, if you go door to door and talk to these people about how you are ab- absolutely surrounded by Sitla land that the county has no control over, you might as well take the.
Not upzone.
Okay. But you know, like, give those property owners the opportunity to get the highest and best use, just like Sitla does. Yes, it's gonna be a madhouse. It would be a madhouse, but otherwise, those people lose out. They get, they have to, they have to deal with all of the other existing non-conforming and their property values, you know, tanks for that reason.
I literally did drive door to door and we marked them and it is a fifty-fifty.
Well, if this was on the table for them, they might consider, especially if they're gonna see that our future proposed map has all of west side of our valley upzoned to, um, multiple use, I would think a lot of people would change their mind about whether or not they wanna be in residential anymore.
See, I think.
And so that's why I asked Mr. Call to like, has anybody done this where like just to, to clean up the problem, you just zone it in, you know, just to change the zones.
That's what we're doing with the multi-use and the community commercial. But our, we're trying to reflect what Sitla's doing. So we have a cohesive community. And Sitla, east side of Spanish Valley is, is mostly residential. So we're trying to have that a large swath of that continue on to county jurisdiction.
In the residential areas don't have thirty to fifty years to wait for Sitla to do their thing. You know, a lot of these folks are aging out. They need to use their land the way they wanna use it now. I think they should have the option to, to be multi-use, just like you're proposing on the west side.
I think your lot should be CC.
Well, they haven't even shown community commercial on there, but anything along Spanish Valley Drive, but then you're starting to, you know, get closer and closer. And we've already rezoned residential flex out, you know, past a mile from the highway. So I guess, I would think it's, I think when we get the public input, we can see what those property owners wanna do. You know, if they say no hardcore, we want residential. And state, I mean, it's the most restrictive zone out of all of them.
But that's to keep it, that's to keep it sacred. Like I'm, I'm with Melissa.
It's obviously not been treated that way.
Well, it's gone rogue. We're trying to, but that's why we're trying to get it back.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I have a question about this. So looking at Spanish Valley, so let's say there was a proposal to change the zoning from residential to like community. Would all of those residents receive a letter that says, your property is being considered, the zoning for your property is being considered to, to change? And this is what will be allowed? And the same is true of your neighbors. They will receive a personal letter.
Through the process of which we're undertaking now, that's why we've hired the consultant, is to have the public hearings and have the open houses.
Yeah.
For these areas.
That's not my question.
Before the final adoption of the ordinance.
That's not my question.
Well, to personally track down their address and tell them.
Well, I, you know, I'm coming from Santa Fe and in Santa Fe, if there was anything going on within a certain, you had to get a letter. You got a personal letter. It wasn't a workshop. It wasn't a public hearing.
We would have to notify, say they didn't see the announcements of the public hearings and didn't have property income for those. Before we finally adopt and change their zones, we have to notify those property owners by mail. Um, and have that process played through and so.
I did not get that by mail when my zone changed.
They, uh, that was, that was, we're moving forward to what you're supposed to do. Whenever you change somebody's zoning on there, you do have to notify those property owners.
Just want that on the record. I did not get notified.
And when there's still, and when there's still time for them to complain about it, yes.
Right. So there'll be like a.
Before the final adoption, they have, the commission has to have a public hearing in the commission meeting. And they have to be, those property owners have to be notified ten days in advance of that public hearing that there's gonna be a zoning change right there. Or if you're an adjacent property owner and you have the adjacency changing the zone, you're supposed to notify those adjacent property owners within those ten days of that public hearing and so.
Oh, we are gonna need that postage allotment.
We'll lick stamps.
Yep.
What if we go over budget?
Yeah, she's got, so we, but we, I upped her budget for stamps and this public notification.
It was like fifty bucks for the year. I'm like, I don't think that's gonna do it.
Well, if you drop back to the stamp, the stamps and the envelopes that she has to leg, that would actually drop the price. Quick, get her the self-at ease.
It'd also help with some brain cells.
By the way, that's a new rule.
We got an intern, interns coming in.
Go ahead, Craig.
The legislature changed that rule recently. That's why notices might not have been sent out some time ago. But it's, I don't know whether you knew, but the legislature changes things every year.
That's weird.
Anyways, that's a little bit of background where we're at.
Some problem going on on the Los Angeles front. You might've noticed, but I digress.
Where do we find those changes so that we make sure that we have them in our new?
Our consultant is going to.
Oh, doing it? Okay, good.
And it's just all the Utah estate code stuff.
But there's also the American Planning Association. And we have a website, the Utah Land Use does, called utahlanduse.org. And on there, each year, there's a summary of the changes in our land use library. So just go utahlanduse.org, click the library tab and then click legislation. I mean, go down the list, do you see legislation and there'll be, there'll be an outline of it, a PowerPoint and a video of the last session we held on the subject, uh, in this case, March twenty-second.
Yeah, we've been referencing those materials as we're reviewing what we're doing. Cause there have been some things changed always.
Well, you guys have been gracious. I'll let you continue your own conversations. Um, I appreciate the chance to get all the veteran acquainted and have enjoyed the conversation.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
Craig, I'll touch base with you a little later in the week here, next week. We'll just keep checking along. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. My pleasure. So long.
Am I out of batteries? Am I on the wrong one? No?
Whenever I have cold water, I get cold. I get warm. I get cold.
It's, it's been. We had snow on Monday morning.
Did you have snow?
It's been cold.
Eighty mile an hour winds the day before.
Oh, yeah.
It's mine. Wait, no, it is my spare. Ring traitor.
Kevin McSheat's up in LaSalle. He spent all day Saturday planting potatoes. And then he set pictures Monday morning and on his wind rolls, it's just wind, there are snow drifts on each. He said, yeah, the seeds don't love it. Yeah.
Um, go ahead and leave us into a technical difficulties. Jen, this is nice.
Oh, I'm gonna get used to bathroom here.
Or I guess I could, I'll, I'll see you with it. Um. So the next item on the agenda is for Jen to give us the open meetings act training. So we'll just turn, we'll turn the timer to you.
I don't have a power plant. I'm old school.
What's still your racer marks on there?
It's just all my mistakes. Okay, open meetings act. Have you all had training on open meetings act before? Each year, right? So you, so it's all review. Okay.
You have it, have it?
No.
We'll, we'll hit the high points and we'll go through a couple of scenarios. I have some regular kind of boring scenarios and I have some colorful scenarios, all G-rated. You can, you can choose colorful or boring when we get it.
Well, Mac blew that G-rated out of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mine are truly G-rated. Okay, so this actually all makes a lot of sense. Um, elected officials and public officials, the intent is that their deliberations and their decisions be public. It only makes sense, right? So we want the public to know what you decide and we want them to see the basis of your decision. So your discussions, you know, the, the information you receive, pro and con, that should all be public. That's the whole concept here. Uh, and you do these things in meetings, right? And so that's why it's the open meetings act. Um, every meeting that is a meeting, which we'll get to, should be open and the substance of the meeting should be created so the public can see it and review it and have it. In the old days, I suppose someone handwrote and that was your record. Today, we have such good technology that, you know, we come up with written minutes that everyone can see cause they're posted. And if there's a discussion about what was, you know, if we missed something, then we can go back, just like we did with some of Melissa's questions, we went back and verified with the audio exactly how everything went and so anyway, it's, it's, today we have an extremely accurate way of reporting things. A very comprehensive and accurate, which is great. So the real question here is what is a meeting? Uh, the Supreme Court described it this way, Utah Supreme Court. A, a meeting is convening of a public body with a quorum for the purpose of discussing or acting upon a matter over which it has jurisdiction or advisory power. So let's just bring out a couple of those main words. So one is a quorum. The other is jurisdiction. I think when you're trying to determine if, if a meeting is a, a meeting for purposes of, of legal purpose, you should first decide, is the thing you're meeting about within your jurisdiction? Meaning is it something you have authority over? Next is, do you have a quorum? And then next is, are you receiving information about a decision to be made? Are you discussing it? Are you acting on it? So jurisdiction, quorum, receiving information, deliberation or action to be taken. If you've got all those, you've got a meeting. Let's see what the, uh, so House Bill thirty-six did. Create a definition. And what I think House Bill thirty-six did was actually put into code what some of the recent cases have said, apply or don't, doesn't apply. This applies, this doesn't apply. So if you have that House Bill, I mean, if, if you wanna look at it, it's on, starts on line ninety-four of the bill. I'll just read it to you and I think we'll see that it covers these same important points. Ninety-four, okay, a meeting, meeting means all these lines crossed out, a gathering of a public body with a quorum present and that is convened by an individual with authority to convene the public body and following the process provided by law for convening the public body for the express purpose of acting as a public body to receive public comment about a relevant matter, deliberate about a relevant matter or take action upon a relevant matter. So in this case, relevant matter means something over which you have jurisdiction or authority. It's roughly the same, it touches on the same thing, a quorum. So you have a public body with a quorum and you're to receive information, deliberate or take action. There's some stuff in there about a person authorized convene, um, a few of those things, but I, the gist of the definition is really the same. Okay? Um, so I think the only way to really understand, see if we all understand, is to let's just talk about a few scenarios. Okay? We're gonna go with the colorful scenarios, alright? Not too colorful, just, I tried to come up with something that would relate to San Juan County, you know? I, I, I wanna talk about. Well, you know, you know, you never know who might be involved here. Um, you know.
Just real quick, a quorum for this body would count as four, correct?
Yeah, majority. It's a majority of the body is a quorum. Yep.
And you can have three buddies, but not four.
And, and if there are only four people, all four have to vote to approve something, is that also, is it a majority vote?
So there's a, it's a good question. So there's a difference between a, a vote that results in, you know, an official act versus just the meeting. So tonight, we're just talking about what is a meeting? Your question of if you have just four and then how do they vote? So it's just still a majority, right?
Yep.
So just, you have to have three of the four.
Majority of the majority.
So you could, your majority gets watered down if you have the minimum for a quorum. So I tried to include a few things in these scenarios that would apply to San Juan County. Uh, and here, here's, here, here's the scenario. So Trent and Lloyd have a common great nephew. He lives in Nevada. And this great nephew, uh, has a lot of prairie dogs on his property out there, kinda like we have a lot of prairie dogs here. And he's quite different from most people. He likes his prairie dogs. And he wanted to make sure that people in the area knew that his prairie dogs were his and everybody else's were not his. So just so people would know. This nephew's extremely bright person, just like his great uncles. And he created this very unique air gun, very precise. It, it, it shoots a little dart. It has a scope and it's just so precise. You can literally get the crosshairs and just pinpoint the smallest little spot. And he decided, he's also a very bright person, does a lot with plants. He decided he was going to earmark these prairie dogs so that everyone would know which were his and which were not his. So on the dart, he put a very sticky little patch and in the patch was one small flower seed and a little bit of dirt. And he would see those prairie dogs stand up. And if you've seen prairie dogs, you know, they stand up and they go ee, 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 you know, they sing their little song. And the ears are just ever so small, but they're there. And he would shoot right through the ear. The dart would go through and the patch would stick. And prairie dogs, you know, they, they get down in the dirt and they, so the patch would germinate and next thing you know, the flowers start to grow. And the flowers go right over ear to ear. So his prairie dogs have the flower. No one else's has the flower, right? Pretty quickly, you got a lot of tourists coming through Nevada. They're like, this is the coolest thing. Where did you get these things? And pretty quick, the, the brilliant nephew says. And pretty quick, the, the brilliant nephew says to his local authority, "I want a prairie dog zone, and I want to be able to charge people to come and look at my prairie dogs, standing up with the flowers, pictures, all that kind of stuff." So he gets it all passed, and it's just a phenomenon. It's great. County gets some revenue from it. The great nephew gets rich. One day, he tells Trent and Lloyd about it, and they decide they want to do that here in San Juan County. So they call Mac. And Mac, he knows about the financial situation here. We can always use more TAC Griffin, and he says, "I, I love this." So Mac invites Trent and Lloyd over, and they're gonna have a meeting about this. They're gonna plan this all out. So that's what they do. They have their meeting. They get in there and they discuss all this stuff. Make some decisions that they can, they can come and bring back to the commission. So is their meeting a meeting that's an open meeting? Mac and the two? So if you go, so it's not, right? Answer's no. But if you want to always be consistent, go through your steps. Do you have jurisdiction? Is it something that you have authority over? Yes, zoning. Even if it's prairie dog zoning, it's still zoning, right? Next is a quorum. You don't have a quorum. Next is, are you receiving information? Are you deliberating or are you gonna make a decision? Eh, mostly deliberating. So one of those three, maybe. But not a meeting. No danger there, right? Okay. What if they get this all set at Mac's house? And Melissa and Shay say, "Well, I want to participate in this." And so Mac says, "Oh, I'll call you on my phone. Put it on speaker so you can hear what we're doing. You can pipe up if you have any questions." So is that a meeting?
Yeah.
So can you participate just on hearing? Okay. I think the cases support that. But House Bill 36 also has a section on participation that starts on line 130. Let's read what it says. Let's see. "Participate means the ability to communicate with all of the members of a public body, either verbally or electronically, so that each member of the public body can hear or observe the communication." So clearly...
Wait, where are you at? Hold on, sorry.
This, this is line, line 130 of HB, uh, House Bill 36.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. I'm already there. I just was looking at it.
So participate means the ability to communicate with all the members of a public body, either verbally or electronically, so that each member of the public body can hear or observe the communication. Okay? Alright. Let's go to scenario three here. KSL hears about this new zone. And, you know, they know that San Juan County just, we come up with the darnedest things down here, and they're excited about it. So they call, they talk to Mac, and they say, "Mac, we would love to have maybe a seven to 10 minute little feature story on our news about this new prairie dog zone. And we'd like some footage from the great nephew from Nevada to see what his prairie dogs look like." So Mac gets it all arranged. And then KSL says, "We would like to have all of your commission, committee here. We'll, we'll send a link to all of them, and they can all join. Their pictures will be up, and we'll go to them each as we go through the meeting and maybe ask them what they think about the ordinance or, or the new zone and something like that." Just brief. So is that a meeting? Is that an open meeting?
Is the zoning and ordinance already in place?
No, it's to discuss it. It's coming up.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Does everybody agree it's an open, that's a meeting? So how would we know, how would we let the public attend if we decide, "Well, that's a meeting. We gotta publish notice"? How would we let them attend? How would we give notice?
They can see it on TV.
There you go. We just put out the notice, right, like we normally do, and it, but it would be KSL on the 15th at 10 o'clock, you know, or whatever. Alright, no problem, right? Okay. Well, what if, what if this group decides to get all together and decide, "We want the balloon festival in Bluff to be held in June, not in..." When is it held?
January.
January. What if you all got together to decide that, to talk about that? Would that be a meeting?
It's not our jurisdiction.
It's not your jurisdiction, right? What if, what if the city of Bluff, the town of Bluff, came to the commission and said, "You know, this balloon festival's becoming a pretty big economic factor in our little city. And we would like to create, I don't know, some kind of protective zone where we can always fly these balloons. And at least for a certain time of the year, nothing else can go on there." Well, then if you had that meeting, would that, how would that be? Would that be an open meeting if you were gonna meet with the city of Bluff about that? Obviously, right? Because it's within your jurisdiction to establish zoning. Okay? What if, let me think for a second here. No, I won't. I think that's enough for those examples. Does that sound right? Is that enough? Okay. Well, let me ask you this. What if you're...
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, just because we are small town living, what happens when you get everybody at town potluck? But you're not talking business.
Yeah, so they used to...
Maybe other people are talking business, but you're staying out of it.
So they used to call those chance meetings. They kind of wrote that out of this new bill.
It actually was crossed out up on...
Yeah. But if you go through the analysis, you do have a quorum. But if there's no subject over which you have jurisdiction and there's no discussion about any of that, then...
Or convening.
Yeah.
I mean, it just comes up a lot at coffee.
Yeah. Well, you're...
What do you think about blah, blah, blah?
You, you can't, you can't remove yourself from the, you know, that's just gonna happen, especially in a small place like this. So as long as you don't have all those elements, you don't have the meeting. You know, you can discuss and, you know, help people understand what's going on a little bit more, but, but that's not an open meeting.
Okay. It just kind of goes back to what we were discussing a couple months ago about that, like, public, the public face and non-biasness.
Yeah.
All that.
But giving your opinion to another board member is considered persuasive?
Yeah, I don't think it's a, I, I mean, there's always that point, you know, where you get to that line and...
Right.
Reasonable discussion as you're at a place like that is, I mean, I just think that's to be expected and it's not a big deal. Okay. Some meetings are not open to the public. They're closed.
Which are no longer called executive.
We just call them a closed meeting. Well, let me ask you about, so there are certain things that are, certain types of meetings that can be closed. What are some examples of those?
Water rights.
Okay. Water rights. So usually, things related to...
Personnel.
Personnel, lawsuit that's in place, that, that's pending or like, or imminent. Purchase of land, you know. Yeah, just any, any of those kind of things, you can have a closed meeting. So if you're in a closed meeting, let's say, let's say there's a closed meeting to discuss a, a legal question about some imminent litigation regarding overnight rentals. And this body has a closed session on that. In the closed session, you discuss freely, you, you know, the possibilities of if you pass this ordinance or if you don't pass this ordinance, or if you take this approach to the problem or that approach. So you talk through all that. Do you vote in the closed session to come up with a decision on it? What do, what is, so you're shaking your heads, "No, that's right." Why not?
Because votes have to be taken in public.
Yeah, yeah. That was kind of the first thing, right? The decisions you may have to be public decisions. You can essentially get it all out there in the closed session, but the vote takes place in the public. And the, the code provides that each member of the commission is, it's to be known who wanted to go in, who supported the closed meeting. Because if someone didn't support it, that, that's just something that the public is deemed to have an interest in. So anyway, so your vote on going in is also something that's made public. So FYI. Okay. That is essentially a pretty brief overview of open meetings.
Has this group ever gone into closed session?
No. Not since I've been here.
We might be.
Can we call for a closed session during a regular commission meeting?
Yes.
You just have to notice it.
Yep, it has to be in the...
So we can't do it impromptu?
So...
Well, this is getting heated and we're having a closed session.
Only if you, you have to kind of keep it running. So in the past, you used to have to keep kind of this running statement. You've typically seen it on agendas that...
Closed meetings pursuant to sections such and such.
Yeah. But we've gotten away with that. Especially as the law has changed where you can't just carb launch, have this statement all the time on there. Then you may. If you are, just call it out and call exactly why you're going in to executive session.
Yep.
So there's no reason to be ambiguous about it.
I was thinking like, say if a discussion is headed in a, in a, like, ethics discerning way. Can we be like, pause, we're headed into a closed session to discuss this?
What you would want to do...
So we have to have it very well planned out.
Over a lawsuit or a real estate or things that are protected, personnel, and just have the discussion.
So we would just have to close down the discussion at the time.
Well, you, you, you could...
You can table it.
And you can stop all public comment at any time. You don't have to take any, and they don't stop, you can clear the rift.
Yeah. You can always say, "It looks like we're entering an area that is more appropriate than a closed session." So we're gonna notice that, and in our next meeting, we're gonna discuss this in a closed session. Yeah.
We have a lot of them on the service district.
Yeah. Downward spiral. How do we get out?
Yeah, you can always just end it and say, "We'll, we'll notice and we'll do a closed session." But even the uncomfortable things are really intended to be deliberated because part of what you do is uncomfortable. It's just that there are some carve-outs that you do in a closed, and then you come back and you just make your decision in public. Okay. Let's talk about the government records and Government Records Access Management Act, otherwise known as GRMA, GRAMA, GRMA? GRAMA. Okay. You'll find some common threads here. So in the open meetings, the idea is the public has a right to hear the deliberations and know of the decisions and read about the minutes and the, the input. With government records, kind of the same concept. The records the government has, they are owned by the state, but they are to be made public to the people. And the people are to have access, free access, so like a copy, to view it or make a copy for free.
But we charge for the copy.
We charge for the copy. So records are always, they're all public unless they fall into a category of private, controlled, or protected. Records belong to the state, but they're made available to the public. So I have in my notes that the, the copy is supposed to be free under GRMA. So there is a difference. If you make a GRMA request, that's, you fill out a form, you know, there's a little process. If you just walk in to the recorder's office, for example, and say, "I need a copy of such and such a deed", you know, they'll, they'll charge you for the copy. But if you make a GRMA request and it complies with the GRMA rules, then you get it free.
And they told us different.
Jen, what line are you on?
So this one is in the line.
Okay.
This is just a, this is a different, yeah, this is a different act. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, public record, non-public, you have controlled, and you have protected. Okay? So a public record, for example, would be what we have here at the county that has, you know, the business name, business address, business phone number. A non-public record would be the business owner's personal address, personal phone number. See the difference? Yeah, you can kind of apply that concept to a bunch of records that county has, uh, the government has about people, individuals. The individual is generally to be kept separate from the basic information. I'm trying to think of another example. So someone wanted to know who's on the plant, the Planning and Zoning Commission here. All your names could be given because that's your position, but they wouldn't give personal phone numbers or addresses or anything like that. So you can kind of separate it that way. What's a controlled record? A controlled record is like a medical record, psychiatric or psychological. Things that are normally considered private, that, that if they were known, it would create, you know, a problem for the person. Give maybe a, you know, certain things are just, don't really have anything to do with your government position. You know what I mean? If, if a person can do their job, it's fine that everybody knows this person has this title with the county, but they don't need to know, you know, about their medical condition, some of those types of things. So those are just, they're controlled. Protected records are kind of similar, but, but different. So a trade secret is a protected record. A lot of commercial and financial information is protected. So you can kind of see how if the city, let's say the city had some documentation related to putting out forbid a certain project. Well, if someone could just get access to that, it would be an unfair thing because then they would know what companies do, how they produce their bids, you know, how they, how they write them up, you know, I don't, you know, just a, a lot of that stuff is, is just, it is just protected. Let's see. Trying to think of some other examples here. You wouldn't be able to get, for example, copies of appraisals, you know, things like that for land. If you're gonna buy land or a copy of a contract, if there's a land purchase coming. Some examples there. Okay. Another, another group of protected records would be things like attorney-client. Attorney-client type records. But you know, again, we kind of have to look at some scenarios to see if we understand what these general terms mean. So let's consider a few scenarios. I don't have nearly as colorful scenario here, sorry. Let's see here. So let's assume that you have your, your, you know, your, your planning and zoning meetings here, and then afterwards, let's say we've got Anne who goes home and faithfully writes in her journal about the meetings, and she puts down something that would be very equivalent to the minutes, meaning all the data's there. And she includes her personal views about, "I can't believe those guys approved this," or "I can't believe so-and-so thinks that," you know, whatever. Just has her personal views in there.
I can see this.
And she puts her own thoughts and so forth. So would that be, would that be a public record? Would that be something that's under GRMA? And why not?
It's her personal.
Okay.
And she wasn't doing it during business.
Okay.
While business was being conducted.
Good insights. What if Anne has the habit of just bringing the journal right here, and she's writing right here in the meeting? Does that change anything?
I think it does, along with electronics and things like that.
So hold on to that thought for just a minute. Minutes from a meeting like this, clearly public record, right? Okay. What about text messages back and forth?
Between, with each other? Yeah.
Are those, are those public record? So keep, keep those in, just keep those thoughts. Let me refer to a little case here. This was a 2019 case. And this involved an individual that was charged with some crimes. And so the criminal stuff kind of went through the process and came to an end. But this individual felt like the police department essentially had it out for him, you know, it was a malicious prosecution type of thing. So he sued the police officers individually, civilly, not, you know, you had the criminal thing. He comes back and sues civilly saying that he suffered such and such damn just because of this unjustified malicious prosecution. Okay? And in order to prove it was malicious and unjustified... And in order to prove it was malicious and unjustified, he kind of had to get way deep into. What was the basis for bringing the charges? What was the basis for taking this forward on a criminal, in a criminal case? How, how would this person get that information? What would he have to have? Well, he would have to have the deliberations, right? Between the prosecuting group, uh, maybe outside experts. Um. So, uh, you know, if I send an, if I send an email to Kristen and I say, Kristen, this is confidential and legally privileged. In my little heading and I say, hey, we got, I think, a problem with, um. We've got this permit that's coming in here for such and such a structure. And I think we've got a legal issue here that we need to consider. And I personally don't think you should approve the, I don't think you should give a permit. And these are the reasons why. So if I sent that to Kristen, would that be a public record? That someone should be able to get a hu- a co- a copy of, get a hold of? So Melissa's saying yes?
I think we, isn't legally privileged a.
So you have the attorney-client privilege?
A judge's request on that one.
So, so let's, let's kind of go through it. Um, there's this, like we, we talked about, there's this line. And you know, certain things are, are going back to the, the types of records. You got public records and non-public and you remember the difference between the name of the business and the address versus. The business owner's name and the business owner's address, difference there. So correspondence and. You know, deliberations here about a building permit and her, Kristen's emails maybe to one of you and different things. All part of the process to decide what to do, right? Part of the record. But the legal, the legal advice or the legal discussion has always been considered different. Because you have this attorney-client privilege. And the idea is there's a value in someone being able to. Know that that one communication, that one area is not subject to the public. Receiving all that. That's a very valuable thing. And so in this case I was referring to. Um, the, this individual was trying to get these emails and all the legal strategy and the impressions of the prosecuting group. And the court here in Utah said, you know, we have this strong. This strong, uh. It, it's important that the public have access to all these records. But it's also very important that the personal impressions and decision-making process. Of people that are in the public service, in the public view, commissioners, prosecutors. Police officers, uh, public elected officials, you know, they, they have also some areas of protection. And their personal views, their personal interpretations and their consultations with their legal counsel are. Not reachable. There, there's not a strong enough public interest to say that those have to be. Uh, produced and here's why. If they did, how could you ever run a prosecutor's office? Knowing that all your emails and all your texts would be subject to grandma. I mean, you literally, who would want to do it, you know? It would just be so difficult. Um. Anyway, I think you can kind of see that. So let's go back to our, let's go back to our scenario. So you have your journal at home. Everybody's pretty clear saying that's not a public record. But when you produce it here, they're saying, well, it is a public record. And you know, the, the difference is the location, one's at home and one's here. But the record is the same, right? There's no difference in it. So if I during this meeting, send an email to Kristen saying. You know, attorney-client legally privileged and I say something like, remember how we talked earlier in the week? That when this issue comes up, we need to follow the legal standard of such and such. And how I think if we do that, you're gonna reach a conclusion that, you know, we can't support this building permit. Now, that's just my opinion. You can do what you want, but this is my advice. That, that letter would be protected, that email would be just as protected if I sent it to her during the meeting as if prior, right? So your journal's protected whether it's written here or at home. Um, the text messaging. I always get hung up on this one. Um. I think that. You, you have to go with. The content of the message. If I texted what I was referring to, to Kristen, it's the same as an email, right? So it has to be privileged, just, just the same. But if I do something that's not gonna be privileged, it doesn't matter whether it's handwritten. Email, text, voicemail that's saved. You see the difference? So it's the content of the message, it's the content of the thing, not the form of it so much. So every possible record can be made public if it fits the, the definition. Or every possible record or, or every, you know. Uh, if, if it's protected, it's protected no matter what form it's in. I guess that's what I'm saying. I hope that makes sense. So if you kept your journal by texting yourself, you know, little notes. It would be a protected thing, whether you did it in handwritten or text. Um. If you had text between you here in the meeting, um, that weren't in the minutes. I think that would be part of the record. If someone said, hey, we want the text messages, we can tell that, you know. Shay is texting, uh, looks like maybe Lloyd or Trent or whoever, or Mac or, you know, during the meeting, we want those. We want those texts, part of a grammar request. Well. If, if, if we received a request and Mac came to you, Shay and says, Shay, were you texting somebody? And you're like, yeah, I was texting Lloyd saying, I thought this was a dumb idea and we shouldn't approve it. You know, that's the same as if you'd said it out loud here and it was in the minutes, only you texted it. But it was part of your deliberations, you know? Right? And, and so you, you can see what I'm saying, right?
Are we still waiting for those text messages from the back row?
So, and the interesting thing about that, to continue with that thought is. We had received those grammar requests for individual text messages, which are grammarable and, and should be turned over. However, to get text messages nowadays, say, for example, I've received. Grammar request multiple times, saying that they want the commissioner's texts, messages. And those two are supposed to be saved and not destroyed or deleted from commissioners' phones. But to get those, you go to, it used to be your phone companies, when you got your bill. Would have like the number associated to end the text message, so you, you had access to that. Nowadays, in order to get that information, it takes a subpoena to, like if you're, your cell phone provider's Verizon. It's a subpoena to Verizon to release those records. And so if you're commissioners, I don't. I keep kind of running total of all of my texts, but after a while, they start to delete as new ones come in. And so in order to obtain those, you're, you're into AT&T, through a subpoena is the only way you can get them. And at that point in time, so for that example, specifically texting off the back row to a commissioner. That's where it ended up is person that made the grammar request, it, we can't fulfill this. We don't have the record, it's not on their, their cell phone bill, Verizon won't give it to us, you have to subpoena them. And so it's still available, it's just a subpoena to the, to the cell phone provider.
So Jins, if Mac had sent a text to Kristen. Which happens sometimes. But because it's attorney-client privilege, your communication with.
Yeah.
But yours wouldn't be, yeah.
If, if it's, if it is truly an attorney-client thing, if I text Kristen and I have a habit of saying. You know, this is, this is attorney-client privileged. Hey, this is the dumbest thing. You gotta tell these guys they can't approve this period, you know? If someone's reviewing that text and saying, well, they'll say, well, the little, the little lead in says attorney-client privilege, but it has no legal opinion in there. So we're gonna, you know, probably someone would say, you gotta give that up.
So it's not always privileged.
Right.
No, and it's, it has to be like that attorney. So whenever those grammar requests come in. The grammar record keeper can, can evaluate it as well as. And they can make a determination whether or not they deem this as important to the public to be released. And they can kind of change that rule of protection.
Yeah.
Typically we won't, but there are those that I've released before from attorneys. There was, you know, they were looking for this attorney communication from this other one. I'm like, well. All I've got is a training notice and invite to this attorney's training, to this other training, to this other attorney. Something like that. I'm like, I'm releasing this. It was a no big deal. It was, yeah, this is nothing, nothing that has to deal with attorney-client confidentiality. It was just the invitation from ex-attorney to ex-attorney and it had no relevance to the case, but yet. They asked for it, so I provided that, so.
There is a, in, in the grammar act, there is a, a balancing of the public's interest versus the right to keep. The, the need to keep it private. So you could conceivably have, and you know, I mentioned this case with the, the police department and the person suing the officers. In that case, there was quite a bit of discussion about how, you know, there is a pretty high public interest in what our police officers. And the prosecutors are talking about as they do things, you know, cause you, you wouldn't want, you know, a, a corrupt. Process there to just be hidden because it's, so there's, there is a weighing of the public interest versus. These categories that have been kind of recognized for a long time. So, you know, theoretically, you could have a perfectly legitimate legal opinion on something. That because it was just so important for the public to know, could be overridden. It's kind of hard to. You know, I don't know, trying to think of a, this isn't a good example, but it, the concept is, is similar, which is. You remember when, uh. This is kind of political, but it's not intended to be political, it's just an example. So remember when James Comey came out and talked about the. Clinton laptop, Hillary's laptop, just before the election? And, you know, there's a longstanding. Policy with the FBI that you don't disclose stuff like that. You, you know, you just, if you decide to charge or not to charge, you don't. You don't, you know, disclose that to the public, especially if it's gonna interfere with an election. But he comes out and he says, because this is such. You know, this is such an important thing to the, to the country at this time, I'm disclosing it. And some people were upset with him and some people thought, well, he, he needed to do that, you know, depending on, I guess, which side you're on. But that's kind of the concept. I suppose if you. If you just had something that was just super important for the community here to know. Uh, a legal, like a judge could say, the public interest just outweighs in this instance, very unusual, but it just outweighs and it's gotta be made public. And maybe it's something like the attorney said to the, you know, prosecuting attorney, throw that gun in the San Juan River. And forget about, you know, I don't know, I'm just, whatever it might be, but anyway, that's the concept. So, I don't know, hopefully that gives you a little overview of the open meetings and the, the grammar.
Careful with, um, from you guys and I may see it often. I have one now that we've gotta work through is. You receive public comments individually through your emails. So in the past before, on some of the, the agenda items that we've had. You've received direct emails from the public to you saying, we disagree with this. Or we agree with this, you should do this. And so those are gramable from you. Even though they're going to your personal emails, and especially in what we've seen in. In this certain case that I've gotta figure out who to request it from, is you brought that up in the discussion. So hey, I received this email, you know, from so-and-so that's talking about this. And you use that in the discussion of which a decision was presented from that. Public comment. And so things like that, just be aware, even though they're in your personal emails. That as you reference them in your decisions or in your discussion, that those also become open to grammar.
And probably the easiest way to protect you against that is just forward them to me and me. Yeah. Because then when we fill the grammar request, it's already in our email, we don't have to like.
When the grammar request comes in, it generally asks for all emails that have, and then they give you some terms, right? And so, you know, your personal emails, if you're not sending any out, that search won't generate any emails. You know, and, and Mac can say, we ran a search and there are no emails from, you know, Commissioner Rig. About this subject, not a single one. Anyway, just to.
Yeah, cause I think all mine come from here. If I've ever got a personal email.
Do we need to talk about conflicts of interest at all?
Policy, just forward them to us and that way we can deal with it on our end.
Yeah, that one, somebody had referenced it. And so I think, I can't remember if it was over the loves.
I referenced one. I referenced one with the helipad.
Oh, might have been, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, but it could've been. It was one everybody got.
I don't think I've ever.
And you see if you guys are getting them, we're getting them as well.
If we get a thank you from somebody, are we supposed to forward that?
Even, even if, even if you end up, you know, producing these emails in a grammar request, it's, it's okay.
Yeah.
Just, you just, we just need to be aware that they are subject to that rule. So we need to be careful. Um, the last thing in the training is the conflict of interest rules. And those are pretty straightforward. Basically, you can serve here. Even though you have a conflict of interest, meaning your profession or your family's profession or your good friend or so. You know, there's just an endless possibility of conflicts. So that's just understood. The main thing is you disclose them, you're just supposed to disclose. So if you're voting on a. You know, we had Ben, Ben came in that one night at Tomco, right? And he had his own little subdivision and he brought it in. So if one of you had a subdivision, you'd probably wanna say, I'm just letting everybody know this is my property, I have a conflict. And the wisest thing to do is to just say, I'm just gonna sit out and let you all decide. You know, that way it removes any impropriety, any, you know, feeling of, well. You know, so-and-so's just up here on this commission to enrich himself, you know, or herself and to.
It's a legislator.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all there's there for.
Yeah, yeah. And, and in a community that's small, you just can't avoid the conflicts. And, but, you know, you, you gotta look at both sides. You want people that are good developers to be on this committee. Cause they have insight about what it's all about. What's a good idea? What's not? They can give their view on it. So that's one way to look at it. Um, you have a pretty good cross-section of people here, so. Between all of you, you come up with some good ideas and good angles on things and you all have your own areas of. You know, your personal impact, so to speak. And so just make sure you declare if you have a conflict. And then you can decide if you wanna sit it out or participate. Okay?
Thank you much.
That was alright.
Thank you, bud. Building permit list.
But that's that.
We checked the boxes.
Yeah, you're, you're now, you're now trained.
You know, we could always have some in-depth discussions like this on particular points if you feel like we need to anytime.
Thank you, Jins.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Jins.
Um, so here's a list of building permits. I'll give you just a minute to look at that. Are any of these permits connected to, um, conditional use? Meaning projects that have been approved and now they're getting going?
The blinding radio tower.
Yeah, I can't say absolutely yes or absolutely no. But Ben and I, Ben and I coordinate that, so before the.
It's a little confusing because we.
Grant some.
Our building inspector does building inspections for Monticello City and.
Oh, really?
Town. And, and he's the one. And so on these building permits, you may see those. Like if you see in Monticello City, you know, that's, that's why, is we do their building inspection for them.
Right.
And so I just don't want you to get confused, like, where, where is this in Monticello? It, it's not our purview. They have their own client commission and then these plan. And then they can get to same of block.
Yeah.
Block town. You know, they go through their land use, their client commission.
It didn't even, I saw it.
Did you see it on here?
Will you go up just a little bit?
We'll go up to the other page.
Well, I've got, I think she
Keep going up.
Does that work for you?
Right there.
Which one?
That one. The radio tower, second one down, I think we've gone through.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, that's blinding one.
We can't get ours down there first.
Of course not.
Yeah, that's, that's not a recent radio tower. They're doing a, it wasn't a recent
It's not the same.
That's forty-one-ten. This was a, I believe they were doing an upgrade and a new little thing. And they did have a conditional use permit that they presented.
Can you, is there a way to flag those or let us know if they're connected to a conditional use permit that we've proved?
That you've approved in the past?
That it's part, you know,
I mean, we
That building permit is related to the We're going forward?
Cause I'll, I'll be honest, like that one, we could not find. But they had
The original one?
But they had it. So that's, we, from this point forward, have OCD records being kept, but from the past. Like that applicant for the radio tower, we're like, well, do you have it? And they did, they do. So as long as they can produce a signed copy or
Was it not expired?
We don't know.
Like I said, from this point forward is color-coded fo- folders, but
It's, it's just an interesting world when you look at the records of San Juan County. We're working out one conditionally used that was approved years ago. And it, this was after the twenty-eleven ordinance, which states that your conditional uses are only for a year. You can extend another year if you come to finding commission. This one that was issued specifically states that it does not expire. What does that mean? It's all
That must be the guy with the RV court.
Different world that
Which one? The one that needs to pay for his connections.
Yeah, and we're, those kinds of things, we're just trying to figure out legally what to do with it. But yeah, the unfortunate thing is some people can't produce it and so if they can't produce it and we can't find it in meeting notes or anything anywhere, then we're just like, you're gonna have to reapply. And usually most of those are timed out anyways.
Or we go to the minutes and we see where the county conditions approved the conditional use. But the minutes don't have any
Any conditions.
And so I was like, so what did they, what were the conditions? And you remember conditional use permits, if they do what they said that they were gonna do, those stay with the property.
Yes.
And can be sold to the next owners. It's like, we had no idea what the conditions were. It's like, good luck. But it was approved.
Yeah, so there, luckily those cases are few and far between, but they are out there.
I'll entertain a motion.
So be it.
Second.
Got a motion in a second too. Close the meeting. Adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Six hours and forty minutes, huh? Or, or five hours and forty minutes.
I appreciate you guys.
I got a late to get to. We, we don't care.
No, really, you guys, I really, really appreciate doing such a long meeting.
Well, so when are we gonna continue the conversation about Spanish Valley map?
Two of us from Spanish Valley can show up without a quorum and help you draw.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do that? Do you wanna meet?
Actually, three of you.
Yeah, three of us, good.
Can three of them and me?
Why don't you just meet, meet down at my office? Let's use, let's use some county fuel instead of me and Shay and Amy.